You're unmutated.
Right, it's nine o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Thank you for being here on a holiday weekend. I'm sure that there is some temptation to be somewhere else, but we appreciate the fact that you're here. So we're calling the meeting to order at nine o'clock in the Frank Walter House Boardroom, and we could have roll call, please.
Do not?
Here.
Markey?
Here.
Matthews?
Here.
Nye?
Here.
Roloff?
Here.
Sauer?
Here.
Frig?
Here.
All present.
You'd stand, please. Eary? Precious God, as we come before you today, discuss important matters, we ask for your guidance and wisdom, a source of all knowledge and understanding, therefore we seek your direction in our decision-making process. Help us to listen intently to one another with open hearts and mind, in your name I pray. Thank you. I pledge allegiance. Great, thank you. You had the agenda in advance of the meeting. There's a couple of changes I'd like to make with your permission. Under, I'd like to move D, F, and G after the scheduled J. So that would be those items we would be discussing only after, is that right? Yeah. D, F, and G after discussion regarding capital plan. And then I'd also like to add an item on there for committee appointment regarding the airport. Is there any objection to that?
I makes the motion to approve that with those corrections.
Big seconds.
Thank you. Another, if you have no questions, we'll, uh, can you use that roll call?
No.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, you have the minutes from October 12th. We'll act on those first, please.
I have one correction. Um, under, after we reconvened after the 10:30 break, um, I think it should say, consider a budget amendment for record conversion for the register of deeds. It says record conversation.
Thank you for that. Any other comments or corrections? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Frig moves to approve the minutes as amended.
Thank you, Christie.
Matthew, seconds.
Thanks, Lynn. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. All right, we're open to our first public comment. Would anybody?
No.
Oh, yeah, thank you. If the motion do approve the closed session minutes I've presented.
Nye, seconds.
If there's no comments or questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, thanks for keeping me on track, folks. Now we'll go to the first public comment. Is there anybody from the public that would like to make a comment? Seeing none, we'll move into the elected officials and department updates.
Hi, I'm Kelly Ottinger, representing Benzy Senior Resources this morning, and just wanted to give you a quick update on our program. We've had quite growth between September and October in our food program and probably as a result of people being nervous about the SNAP benefits and anything that comes with that. Um, 16% growth in the onsite meals and 7% on home-delivered meals, and we're on track for that same growth between October and November as well. So, and our kitchen staff did that, down three people over the last two months, and I'm pleased to report this morning that we're finally fully staffed and we're training people, and so I'm looking forward to having a more smoothly-oiled machine moving forward. Um, also, you'll be getting a door-to-door, we did a door-to-door newsletter this year. It should be coming out right around Thanksgiving, and just giving a program update and letting people know what services are available through us, and so you should be seeing that in your mailbox soon.
Is there any questions for Kelly while we have her here? Just one question. I know we're early into the fiscal year, but, um, your food costs.
Yes.
Uh, can you talk to us about that? Are you gonna, does it look like you'll stay within your budget, or are you concerned about that?
I, I believe you will stay within our budget. Um, we did budget for the next fiscal year at 19% higher, um, just to allow for, for that, so.
And have you kept, then, as a result, um, have you did any pricing changes for your meals at, like, onsite or delivered?
We have not. Uh, we, we did that, I believe, about 18 months ago. We raised them by 50 cents, and so we've, we've, and that was the first time in about four years. So, uh, in light of, um, people struggling right now, we decided just not to at this time.
And is pricing at your discretion, or is there guidelines on it?
There are guidelines for the reimbursables we get through the area agency on aging. Um, really, the, the main guideline with that is that, uh, nobody can be turned away, um, for lack of ability to pay, and so we do try to publicize that to people, to let them know, um, they can come have a meal and, and not to not come if they can't pay. Um, but, yes, they do, they do set, um, a minimum that we are to, and we, we call them suggested donations. We don't actually say it's the cost.
Any kind of other comments or questions? Then I'll just say that, you know, Benzy County is fortunate to, in my opinion, deliver a superior product and service for our seniors.
Thank you.
And, uh, I can tell you, speaking for the commissioners, that's important to us.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, uh, from elected officials? If not, we'll move on to finance.
Today, we're seeking approval of the bills, the amount of $272,552.79.
Roloff, make that motion.
Markey will support.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Markey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Roloff?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Frig?
Yes.
Do not?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, Katie, do you want to introduce the first, uh, subject on the 2% grants?
Absolutely. So the first action item in your packet outside of the bills you will see is an application for a 2% tribal allocation for Benzy Senior Resources, and this application is to support the food assistance and meal programs. Um, as you know, with the 2% tribal allocations, they have to funnel through us, um, and then submit it to the, to the tribe.
Markey will make the motion that the Board of Commissioners approves the grant application, the tribal council allocation of 2% funding on behalf of Benzy Senior Resources and authorizes the chair to sign.
Frig will second.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Um, those are due the 30th, so we'll want to make sure you sign them today, Art.
Okay, will do. If there's no other discussion, roll call, please.
Matthews?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Roloff?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Frig?
Yes.
Do not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is there anybody here representing Hope House? Would you like to step forward and introduce the subject?
I'm Robyn Kyler. I'm the Executive Director of Hope House. We are a maternity housing program located right here in Benzy County. Um, we're seeking your approval for, uh, grant application for the 2%. Um, so, we've been open since March of 2024. I'm pleased to say that as of yesterday afternoon, we just housed our ninth residence. We now have a full house. We've got four women in our home. These women come to us 18 and older. They're single. They're homeless. They have no other support. They're pregnant. Um, so the funds that we're, we're seeking, um, we're looking for a, um, a safe play area located in the backyard of our home for the, uh, the children to play in in the afternoon or the mornings, excuse me. Um, and we're also seeking funds for, um, another hire. We are running on a skeleton crew. We run a staff 24/7. These young ladies are never in the home alone. Um, I'd like to say that the, the young lady we brought yesterday, this is just an instance, um, she's from Ethiopia. At five years old, her and her younger sister were placed in an orphanage. When they were eight, they were adopted by a family here in Michigan. Fast forward, 2018, this young lady was crowned Miss Michigan Teen. Fast forward from there, she came to us six months pregnant, homeless, living in her car, and fleeing an abusive relationship. So these are the women that we reach out to help. So we're running on a skeleton crew. We really need assistance.
Questions or comments? Robin, I mean, just a, a couple of things I could ask. What, if any, association do you have with Women's Senior, Women's Resources?
We have a relationship with Women's Resource Center.
And is there, do you, I think what you provide is invaluable, by the way.
Thank you.
Um, do you have much problems with significant others or spouses at the home?
We've only had one incident that it didn't, it didn't come to fruition, but we have the assistance of the Benzy County Sheriff's Office and also the Frankfurt Police. We have a relationship with them. Yes.
All right, glad that you do.
Thank you.
There's no other comments or questions? We'd entertain a motion.
Frig, um, moves that the Board of Commissioners approve the grant application for tribe tribal council allocation of 2% funding on behalf of Hope House of Northwest Michigan and authorizes the chair to sign.
Nye, seconds.
There's no additional comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Nye?
Yes.
Roloffs?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Frig?
Yes.
Do not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Very good. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. All have a blessed Thanksgiving, and we appreciate you so much. Thank you.
So as the amended agenda would call for, the next item that we'll be discussing is. Item C.
C, declaring the Chevy Tahoe surplus.
Oh, yeah, okay, thank you.
Uh, the next item in your packet is to declare the 2014 Chevy Tahoe as surplus and authorize its sale on my bid.
Markey will move that the Board of Commissioners approves, uh, the sale of the, uh, the Chevy Tahoe, ending, event ending in 3360, who declared surplus and authorizes for sale, proceeds be credited to the 425 equipment replacement.
Second.
Oh, sorry.
Who got that?
You, you, he may have it.
I'll do it.
We'll spread the love around.
Yes, he may have it.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, that would be roll call.
Yeah. Roloffs?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Frig?
Yes.
Do not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Tim, thanks for stuttering just a little bit. It made me feel better that I keep missing things today.
I always try to, try to help you out there.
You're a good man.
So the next item would be the jail medical services contract.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do you want to introduce that, or?
Um, I can introduce it, and the sheriff can answer any questions. Um, this is for the jail medical services contract with All Access Care. All Access Care is, um, the doctor is Dr. Custer. She's been our, uh, doctor up there for. She's been our doctor up there for quite some time now, and her staff has been assisting us. With that, this contract includes the added services of the MAP program. You'll recall recently, you approved opioid funding to support the MAP program. Dr. Custer and her team would be helping to administer that MAP program. So this contract includes that service, although that funding would be coming from opioid funding and the other funding would come from the jail fund. It's other, the other thing to note is that the folks that we house of the Grand Travers County or the tribe, they pay separately for their medical through Dr. Custer. So we're not paying for those outside inmates' medical care. That's outside of the routine check-in medical. So this also stipulates that in there as well.
Anything you want to do?
Well, I brought my undersheriff with me because he's been working on this and he's walking in as we speak. Thought he saw a shiny object probably and, sorry.
Got distracted?
He's been working hand in hand with Dr. Custer and her staff on this. So, any questions you have would be directed to him, I believe.
I kind of gave an overview of what it was for and how we've been with Dr. Custer for some time, and that Grand Travers and the tribe would pay for their own portions.
That's it.
Good morning.
Morning.
Undersheriff Greg Hubers? I am open to any questions that you might have about the contract, Dr. Custer and All Access Care.
Please.
Not in the right spot, but I believe I read that if the provider doesn't show up, it's a $30 deduction from the monthly bill. I guess it prompted the question, does that happen often? Because it seems it would create a, a situation.
We have probably twice asked for a reduction in the bill because there were things that, A, errors that we found in the billing. And frankly, Brenda Miller-Goke, he was on that like crazy. And if she finds an error in the billing or an overcharge in the billing or a bill for a service that didn't happen, she gets it eliminated from the billing. She gets the line by line and goes through line by line and compares it to our jail list and it's really on the ball on it.
That question was worth knowing that, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Yeah, I do. With the inmates from like the tribe and Grand Travers, do they get the exact same care? I mean, she has a certain billing she gives us for our inmates, but I'm learning that is that trans, do they have a choice? I mean, Grand Travers can say, nope, this is the kind of care that we want and this is our provider?
No, our provider has the sole rights, as it were, to provide medical treatment to the inmates that are in our facility. So they get the exact same care.
I would just say overall, you're satisfied with the services being provided?
We are very happy. This was about a six month process because there were some things in this contract that weren't beneficial to the county. And there were some things in the contract that weren't beneficial to Dr. Custer. And for the last six months, we've had weekly phone meetings and really hashed out those details. And I'm confident that this is the best contract we're going to get with her and with that company.
I guess my final question would be, you know, usually with professional services, every so often you put that service out to bid, just to make sure your, your charges are competitive. Is that even a possibility in this area with this kind of service?
It is. There are some that are available, mostly in downstate, because they, the more jails you service, the more money you can make. In RA, Dr. Custer right now is probably about the only game in town. And the service from the, we'll call them the big lot store medical providers, we've done that in the past and they're horrible. And she has a lot more one-on-one care and communication without.
Other comments or questions? We'd entertain a motion then?
I can, I'll stutter through this one too. I'll make the motion that the Board of Commissioners authorizes the professional services agreement with All Access Care, PLLC, for medical services to the residents of Benzy County Jail. The amounts outlining the agreement included in the November 25th, 2025 package material for one year, automatic annual renewals unless fee change. The funds available in the jail.
For a second. Additional comments or questions? Hearing none, that'd be roll call.
Yep. Sauer?
Yes.
Frigg?
Yes.
Do not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Roll offs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thanks for being here. Are we going to move to the Parks Cultural Plan?
Yes.
Want to introduce that one?
I will. So the next item is consideration of adopting the Parks and Recreation Cultural Master Plan. We do have Sarah Kirk in the audience today. Sarah has been working hand in hand with the Parks and Recreation Commission in the county to update and rewrite this plan. As you know, the plan that is currently in place has expired, which then we're not, we don't have the ability to apply for certain grant funding through the state without an active plan. This has had a public hearing held in place. There were various community output, input sessions from different events throughout the summer in Thompsonville and other communities to get input from the community. There was also a survey that had quite a few responses from community members as to what they would like to see for the future of Parks and Recreation in Benzy County. So now it is here in front of you today. There is a link to the item in your packet because it's quite long, but it's in front of you today for consideration of adoption. Or you could review and recommend additional adjustments before adopting. Sarah Kirk, though, is here for questions and to give a further overview if needed.
Sarah, we'll give you a chance to make your comments first.
Hi, I really wasn't going to say much more than Katie did. We, we did have the draft plan has been out since, since September 22nd. And we had six comments that came in during the draft, the time of review. Then we had three additional comments at the public hearing on the 17th. At the public hearing, the Parks and Recreation Commission agreed to incorporate all those comments. And then they recommended the draft as they discussed at that meeting for you guys today.
Do you sit on that, are you the liaison?
Yes, I am, well.
Any comments?
Actually, I'm a member. I get to vote at this one.
Any comments you'd like to offer?
No, I think she's done a great job and as Moby, most of you already know, if we don't have a rec plan, we can't get grants. So it's very important. And kind of been without one for a period of time now, so, yeah, so.
And I want the first one?
Yes.
Board of Commissioners moves to approve the resolution to adopt Benzy County Recreation and Cultural Plan 2026 through 2031 as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Matthew, seconds.
Additional comments or questions, please?
I, I thoroughly enjoyed reading through this document. I read the first one, I took the survey. This is very nicely done. I did have a comment, and again, I'm, I'm not an expert here. Under the inventory, and I, and I, and I do love the inventory, that is so wonderful. I think under Frankfurt, it mentioned a Benz, not, it mentioned a senior center. And I believe that senior center is no longer there. I'm trying to look for it here quick, I should have pulled it up. Let me see here.
That is okay, that was one of the comments, one of, I guess a couple of the comments that we got back from the public where there was a couple of things that, like in Thompsonville parks that needed to be updated too. So that is absolutely great to be noted because we still have to incorporate those comments that we had at the public hearing. So that can be updated too.
Okay. So. Yes, and I didn't have anything, you know, with the rest of the content or anything like that. You know, this is a lot of information to sift through. I probably should have done this, you know, weeks and weeks ago, but I did not.
No, you're absolutely right, it's a lot. So, I think you can still say, like we did at the public hearing, as discussed today, and we'll
Okay.
incorporate that.
Okay.
I'll update that in this chart as well. Yeah.
It's a, there's a lot of information here and it is a wealth of knowledge and I really appreciate it. I really do.
Yeah, I see, it's on page 54, just FYI.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Other comments or questions?
Sarah, will actual master plan, Park and Recreation master plan books be created based on this? I have a copy of one from a long, long, long time ago.
Well, it would just be this one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Where would folks be able to get that?
Should be available on your website.
It is available on the website, are you talking hard copies? Yeah, like an actual hard copy.
Yeah, and I would, I would recommend that you guys print out a couple of hard copies.
They can get some.
Have, yeah. Yeah, just like a master planner.
On request?
Yeah.
Yeah. It might not be, maybe we can bind it. I don't know if we have a binder, might have to borrow Sarah's binder.
Additional comments or questions? Lynn, you know, you're new to the process, I don't want to rush you through it. And I don't want you to be hesitant about asking questions either. You're, you're okay where you're at right now?
Definitely, yeah. Had a couple hours getting ready to do it and other commissioners losing a bunch, but I'm ready.
Very good. So Sarah, I just want to be clear about this. You had some additional public input and there will be changes made to the policy that was presented to us as a result of that, is that what I heard you say?
Yes, those were documented in that memo that was in your packet. So I, I just don't make the, all the edits to this until after. Once I get all of those edits, then I'll just, I'll, I'll update so that you'll have a final PDF with all of those comments incorporated.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
So we have a motion with support. If there isn't any additional questions, I'll call for the vote.
Trig?
Yes.
Do not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Roll offs?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thanks for being here.
The next item in your packet is consideration of adopting the updated purchasing policy and procedure. This policy was put in place as an amended form a few years ago. And then we recently updated it within the last 12 months. When we updated it within the last 12 months, we put in place a step in the process that once we went through that step and the process didn't make complete sense. According to the purchasing policy, any purchase over a certain threshold shall go to the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee. So therefore, the vehicles went to the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee, which really didn't make sense because Buildings and Grounds isn't, isn't after the discussion of purchasing vehicles. It's for the purpose of Buildings and Grounds related items. So after going through that process, and it was a bit of a muddy process, we realized that we really need to update the purchasing policy to reflect the true intent. The intent was, is that purchases over a certain dollar amount related to Buildings and Grounds maintenance and such should go to Buildings and Grounds because the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee is put in place to vet some of those sorts of projects. And so you'll see in the policy today, a redlined version, which essentially is putting in exceptions. Exceptions to the Buildings and Grounds portion is purchase of vehicles, purchase of emergency radios and telecommunications. It wouldn't make sense for a radio purchase to go to Buildings and Grounds because, well, it's not Buildings and Grounds related. And so the policy that's in your packet today is going to factor in those different exceptions because sometimes when you make a policy, it makes sense on paper until you carry out the process and then you realize, hey, that didn't make a real, a lot of sense. So that's what's in front of you today.
We could have a discussion on this at our agenda meeting.
We also did in Buildings and Grounds.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there questions or comments for Katie on her request? This clears it up.
Sense to me.
So there's still a process in place. There's still the different dollar thresholds as like if it's just the department head and their approval, then to administration, then to the board. So those are still in place, it's just calling out those things that don't make sense to go to Buildings and Grounds. We had some conversation about Buildings and Grounds and what is the intent of Buildings and Grounds and what do they actually, you know, see or talk about? And it really is things related to building maintenance and grounds maintenance. So for instance, the tractor, if we're going to do irrigation, those sorts of things are going to Buildings and Grounds. A sheriff's office patrol vehicle doesn't make sense to go to Buildings and Grounds.
It's like a purchase card kind of deal, or is there a different form of payment we do? I'm used to the federal kind of.
Oh, so we do have credit cards. There are various folks on the campus that do have credit cards. So sometimes the purchase makes sense to use a credit card. But when you get to a certain dollar threshold, nine times out of 10, we're cutting a check or doing an EFT for those things. It's really a case by case scenario. And depending on who the vendor is, if we have a vendor that we already have an EFT relationship with, well, we'll do an EFT transfer. But if it's a vendor that, say, Amazon, for instance, we're using the credit card for that a lot of times. But we have various forms of payment, just depending on the transaction at that time is how we're going to process it.
And who's in charge of the purchasing program overall for the county? Is there one person, is it the administrator, is it?
So our office manages accounts payable. So we're going through that process and cutting the checks and doing the EFT transfers from a budget standpoint. Any cash movement is done by the treasurer's office. Every department really manages their own purchases and requests for purchases, though. The sheriff comes to administration with a recommendation regarding the patrol vehicles. Tammy would come to the office and say, hey, these are the desk I'm thinking about, what do you think? So each department gets to really have their own ownership of what they're purchasing for their department. And then depending on the dollar amount, there's then a course of procedure called out in this policy itself. But our office ultimately pays the bill through accounts payable. And then the treasurer, after we've cut the checks, the treasurer moves the cash to match the budget transfer.
Thank you.
And remind us, how many set of eyes look at accounts payable before they actually get cut?
So in most situations, the department will put in the item itself. And a lot of times, it's the entry level person in that office will put in the system, into the system. Then it goes to their department head or elected official. From there, then it comes to administration. And after administration gives it the nod, then it goes to the Finance Committee, which is Commissioners. After the Commissioners give their nod, then it's printed. After we print the checks, we give them back to the clerk, who then looks at them again and signs them. She then gives them to the treasurer, who makes sure that the, everybody balances from a transfer standpoint. Then she signs them and transfers the money. Then they come back to administration and we stuff them in envelopes and mail them. Well, real simple.
Real smooth.
Sincere.
Actually, probably a little bit of overkill, but it's
It might be.
It's public funds, so it's important.
And we don't have a check run this week, if you're curious, because of the holiday.
And with respect to the credit card, I think it's important to note that as we're going through our accounts payable to verify them, we can look at the detail on the credit card, not just what's total due, correct?
And that is correct. So we just transferred to JP Morgan, who gives us one big credit card statement. And then what happens is we break up the credit card statement for all the individual cards. And then each individual card has to account for its individual transactions. So while we're paying one lump sum to JP Morgan, in the system is every card's transactions and the backup for those transactions. So we do have a policy regarding the credit card, so it does stipulate who has credit cards. We have a fair number of credit cards. But everybody individually is accounting for all their individual transactions that are then put into our accounts payable system.
Very good, appreciate the explanations. Are we still looking for a motion?
I think so.
I think so.
Let the Board of Commissioners adopt the purchase policy and related procedure as amended.
Trig will second.
If there's no additional comments, we'll call for the vote.
Do not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Roll offs?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Frigg?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, I believe we're going to discuss the capital plan. I had asked you in advance of even getting the packet, take a look at this. You got a memo from me reminding you that we have $400,000 worth of requests You got a memo from me reminding you that we have $400,000 worth of requests and $172,000 budgeted. So we have some work to do. And. I'm not really sure how to approach this. So Katie, I'm going to ask you to introduce the subject. And then I want to get each of the commissioners' thoughts.
Sure. So in your packet, you were provided with various spreadsheets. The blue spreadsheet we're talking about first. So when Art says that there's just about $171,000 budgeted for the capital items. That's specifically for the general fund section of the spreadsheet. When it gets into the next blue row that says other funding sources. Those are different funding sources. So those are outside of the general fund. So the general fund specifically, which starts with security, emergency, down to total general fund. So technology, sheriff, emergency management, buildings and grounds. There's a total request of 404,000, but about $171,000 budget. When you get into the other funding sources, so B S and A upgrade digitization. You can see there in the parentheses where those funds actually come from for those projects. And then when you get into special millage funds, those dollars are coming from those special millages. So one is the jail. 911, EMS, and so forth. Those are coming from those specific funds. From a 911 and EMS and jail standpoint, there was ample funds budgeted and adopted. To support the requests that are at hand in this column for 25, 26. The, the section that is not supported with ample funding is the general fund specifically projects. This is separate from vehicles. We'll get to vehicles next. This is just for those projects listed within the general fund.
Katie, we had, in an earlier meeting, we had approved the body cameras.
Correct.
And that's $60,000 according to this report. Is that 60,000 part of the 170,000 that's available?
Yes.
So really, we have $110,000 available.
Ish.
Yeah. So I'd be interested in your thoughts, folks. We're going to have to trim this down.
I do have a question. So these are things that we had, because I, I thought we, I thought we. Decided we were going to buy a lawnmower. Maybe that was something else, but I, so how many of these things have already been approved and we're working on?
So we talked about buying a lawnmower, but we haven't actually purchased a lawnmower yet. The only item on this list that was approved and we're working through is the maintenance barn remodel specifically. So those funds are technically from last fiscal year carried over. So from the 404, if you subtracted the money for the barn remodel and then. Subtract, that would be then the total request for the year. And then we've already approved $60,000 for the body cams. So the ones that, for lack of better words, could be on the chopping block. Our car door access system, government center roof evaluation, ceiling tiles and repairs. Sidewalks, stairs and railings. Equalization building remodel, building addition condenser units. Rooftop units, vault storage, flagpole landscaping irrigation. Lawnmower, lower level access door, comm van radio, pole barn for the sheriff's office. Boat lift, Crystal Lake. Board of Commissioner technology upgrades and digitization of building and equalization.
One question I have. All these items on this list, are there any that like. We really have to get done because that what we're replacing is crumbling kind of thing? Like, for example, flagpole landscaping irrigation. That could be just.
That could more or less be a wand.
Yeah. That's kind of what I'm getting at.
It'd be great to have, to spruce up, but if it had to wait, that's not one that, you know. We have to cut services because we don't have irrigation. The governmental center roof evaluation, I will say, we've had. Various leaks over the last 12 to 18 months, one specifically in the Red Sheriff's Needs Office, which was very unpleasant. So that, that to me would be something that's a bit more important because we are having leak issues in various portions of the building. The governmental center sidewalk, stairs, railings, et cetera. We do have areas that are presenting issues with cracking and unevenness and crumbling, but it's not everything. We could potentially block off areas if necessary, but that cost is going to be $350,000. So when you see $75,000 there, that's just a savings to do the whole project in a couple of years. That's why you're seeing then 150 for next year and 150 for the following year. Is because we had proposals done for the, the concrete around the campus. And it was 350 to 400,000 to do all the concrete. That was one that was saving. So if we. Take that one off the list, we're essentially just not tucking away any money for following years. We'll have to tuck away money in the future.
Sidewalk issues, are they considered safety hazards?
At this point, no.
However, you could do something less than 75,000. Again. Putting money aside for that project.
Yes.
With respect to the roof inspection, that's just the cost of evaluation.
So we anticipate that would be the evaluation and then any minor fixes that may need to be had at that time. But to do the entire roof would be much, much more.
Right, but we're assuming it's gonna, that's our best guess that it's gonna.
Correct.
We haven't reached out to block some roofing or anybody to see if they would charge.
It could be $5,000. It could be 20. It could be 100. We really don't know on that one.
But what we can anticipate is that if you're going to have an inspection done. It means you're going to respond to whatever that inspection shows you.
Yes.
And that's not currently budgeted.
No.
So kind of pointless to do the inspection if we're not going to respond to the recommendations, right?
Right. We have really nice buckets that we just put in the treasurer's office when it rains.
You know, my observation in that piece is. Almost all of us sitting here, maybe with the exception of Lynn, when we came in here, there was a lot of deferred maintenance that hadn't happened yet. And through circumstances, we've been able to cure a lot of those. But let's not get ourselves in a position, we're behind the eight ball again. Roof's kind of important, at least to me, and I'm, and I'm betting it is to. To you, Paula, right? And why don't you, because we all mean, I only knew this still recently. Why don't you share with us what happened?
So. The big air conditioning units that are on top of the roof.
The rooftop unit?
Yeah, sits right above our vault. So then I guess condensation goes underneath of it. Somehow leaked down and it started leaking in my office on my desk, which that isn't that big of a deal. But then we started hearing the lights making a noise in the vault. And that whole light panel was filling with water. So. I ran up to the dollar store, got all kinds of plastic. My girls started taking all the books out of the vault. And we ended up covering everything and I think the company came in on Friday night. And the door on the air conditioning had blown open, so that also had water in it. But it could have been very expensive if those books would have gotten ruined, like if it would have happened over the weekend and we didn't know. Because that was a Friday afternoon. So thank God it was caught.
Well, aside from the inconvenience of it, if water's getting up underneath the bladder or however that roof is centered. It's going to start rotting away things.
Right.
Some of you are more dialed into this than I am, but I know from my own projects. There could be a much bigger bill that ends up coming down the road if we don't take care of that.
Well, and that's the issue as well, that Kyle has identified the new maintenance person is. We have, our trees are too close to the building and it's causing debris onto the blocks and roof, which is then causing. Cracks and seepage and such. And so some of the tree removal is because we're thinking about the roof. Because what's happening is there's a lot of debris happening on our roof and the prior maintenance was not cleaning it off the roof. So then you got your rooftop and then this blattered, you know, roof. And when the debris gets into it, you're having issues of backup on the drains, poking through those sorts of things.
The challenge we have is we don't know what they're going to find.
Yep.
We have some suspicion. But we certainly don't know what the cost of the fix is. That is up in the air.
Oh yeah, so it could be, it could be $500,000 to completely redo a roof.
Of which that's not even in the offering right now, but if we were to approve the inspection. In my point of view, we need to consider putting an arbitrary amount of money aside for any temporary fix.
Yes.
So it's not just the 20,000 we're looking at, although they may do the evaluation for nothing. I don't know. In fact, don't they usually?
It depends. Some, some companies will evaluate and propose for free and. We're in this weird market where a lot of people want you to pay for it. So.
I know capital needs, I'm sorry, though.
And we're in November.
That's correct.
So some of these things need to have eyes on them, on it more timely.
I am worried about this ice buildup and, you know, snow thaw and freeze thaw. That, you know, as you know, that's when leaks become most apparent, it seems.
We've been talking about this roof for many, many years. Maybe not to this magnitude, but there's always issues with the roof and at some point in time. We're going to have to get it looked at, appraised and see what's going to happen. Do we know how old that roof even is?
That the.
All before me.
Say that we didn't have an incident. Our office. Don Ray was registered. It must like that. Dumped all over our coffee machine. That's hot and that was, I don't think. Hear that then, but.
I, I remember a conversation with Rick that the roof was done in his tenure here. And so he's been gone about just over a year and he was here for 18 years. So it's probably been in the last 20 years, based on that conversation.
I'm curious, is that a rubber roof or what do we have up there?
We've actually never been up there. You can't access it very easy because they put in an access door in a closet with no ladder. So we have to get on the roof by putting a ladder propped up against the building and climbing up there. Because there was no access ladder put in from the inside for some reason.
I guess from this discussion, what I'm hearing is, is that this could be a fairly high priority and we're not certain what the cost is.
That is correct.
Is it, it's been a long time since I've had to hire somebody to give me an estimate on a repair, but. If they were to give us, if they were, someone was to come in and, and give us an estimate. And they charge you for it, do they apply then that if they get the work? Do they apply that cost? Anybody know?
Not usually.
No.
I think for our purposes today, though, I mean, we're, we're honing down. Make a commitment to the fiscal year, this fiscal year, right? We're not projecting out any further than this fiscal year.
Right.
I think we're trying to speculate on a lot of areas we just don't know the answers to. If we find out that the estimate can be done for free. Let's get them in here and look what we're facing. This can be amended. We can make decisions today and come back and say. Going to end up costing 10,000, where are we going to find it? We need to do additional shifting around. But I think we need that information to know where we stand on the roof evaluation.
Brenda, where I'm going with this, and I think you understand it, is I am trying to anticipate a little bit what the additional cost would be. Because I'd hate to be authorizing other purchases, finding out that we have to renege on those in order to do the roof. It's kind of like prioritizing it is what I'm trying to do. Well, let, let me give a starting point. Is, is there anybody in disagreement about. Prioritizing at least the inspection of the roof?
Think that's a good idea. It needs to be done. And we should have a better idea where we are financially with certain things. There's a lot of things on this list are wish lists. Concrete we can get by with. I'm more concerned about the steps going to the sheriff's office. I don't know how bad those are anymore.
That was one of the more costly repairs, wasn't it?
Yeah, to do all the concrete on the campus, to shore it all up and replace squares that needed and those sorts of things was like 350 or 360,000.
Just the stairs though was a good.
Oh yeah, that was the most expensive portion of it was the stairs because based on the folks who came out, Team Elmers being one of them. To repair the stairs did not make any sense. You needed to rip them out and start from scratch.
Crack stack up the thing instead of the, instead of the concrete because the concrete's not going to. Bear as well as the other stuff.
Arguably, could we do away with the stairs?
I was going to point that out.
We have paved.
Where, where are you going to access the sheriff's office from other than the road then? We're trying to keep people off the road. Those stairs are used a lot. From folks in this building going down.
A less intrusive system from the building on the.
What would you propose? Pardon? What would you propose?
Well, we could talk about.
Just like a walking path?
Saying who made the decision that those stairs had to stay at that cost. I mean, I think it's worth looking at different alternatives. And we can discuss that outside the meeting. You don't have to have those ideas right now, but it should be a consideration.
Yeah.
There's other options besides that set of stairway coming down the hill.
Sure.
I don't think you need an eight foot set of stairways width by.
Say that again, Gary? You gotta lean in.
I was saying now.
You need, you don't necessarily need a stairwell that wide. Four foot is, would meet code. Basically, it's just accessing people, not. You have something big, you're going to drive it up there. I'm going to carry it up the steps. Just saying, I don't think we need that, that big of a set of steps.
Just wondering. I'm not aware of the requirements of the width or anything, so.
Most of them in the house is four foot.
Yeah. I think commercial is different, though, because it's considered commercial.
Yeah, I think so too, but. But what I've heard you say is that this is not something that has to be done this year. Okay, so we could look to move that out at another date.
Yeah, the, the, what's happening, if you use the stairs at all, is the. The ends, like the edges of the stairs are crumbling off, so it's shortening the landing of your foot. Because it's crumbling on the edges. And then there's cracks. And then holes in some of the landings of, like, I'm talking the little step landings. There's holes in some of it as well.
Just don't want people falling.
Yes, that's a big issue.
Don't want that type of liability.
Okay, now that we've talked about it publicly, I'm going to tell you, we may have to consider closing those stairs off.
If they become a liability, yeah.
Possible tripping hazard. Someone, now that we've acknowledged that. All right, that's a different discussion, but that, that raises a red flag for me right away. But that is a project, we could close it off and worry about doing that project at another time.
If it became a risk, yes, we would close them off.
I'm going to let Buildings and Grounds take a look at, you know, what the risk is to us, but now that it's been brought up, we got to address it. What else would you like to look at here? Remember, we have after the body and car cams, we've got 100 and.
11.
111,000.
I think that we need to take a look at animal control. And I say that only because.
So that's outside of the general fund, though. We're talking about general fund right now. I don't want to muddy it as well.
I guess on my list, it would be the I T for the Board of Commissioners.
To strike that?
Yep, that's an easy bite.
So we could move that, just move it out to a different timeline, right?
Right.
Okay.
Been moving that for quite a few years, but.
Yeah, but we've all, you know, we all provide our own technology right now and the ones that don't have it don't really want it, right?
But I agree with you.
Well, you did say set aside the flagpole and the land for the irrigation.
You know, I don't want to beat, beat this to death, but I want to come back to the roof. We got $20,000. We've agreed that it needs to be. Looked at. We have no idea whether it costs us nothing or something greater than 20,000. But then we need to anticipate there's a cost of doing at least a, a Band-Aid repairs. To get us to where we can then do the full roof, if that's necessary. What if we plugged? $40,000 in there? And we're going to, we could, we could know relatively quickly if we really need that 40,000 or not. I'd, I'd be interested in other people's thoughts.
Well, we're, you're, you're putting a number in that we're guessing.
Absolutely.
I've worked on buildings, I, I used to run buildings that were as big or bigger than this one, flat roof kind of setup. A lot of times, they'll be more than happy to give you the short term Band-Aid fix. We're going to clear some drains out. We're going to plug in some. Hoop in there to cover the holes, a, as long as they're allowed to simultaneously give you an estimate for a. The huge job to do the whole thing. And I think if you go into it, that kind of thing, hey, we're looking at a short term fix now with the potential of, of going larger. They should be more than happy to come in and provide that, if not free, gone clothes.
As an example, I'd give you on those rooftops that we have, in, in my experience. Sometimes those just need to be resealed from time to time. And that's the Band-Aid approach, but it keeps it from leaking. Did you want to say something?
I just wondered, in the Huddly conversations, Katie, we talked a lot about needs. And, you know, 911 was brought up, Parks and Rec was advocated for. Was the roof ever addressed in those conversations? That this should be part of that campaign?
Not at the committee level, no.
Was capital improvements.
Capital improvements as a broad stroke, yes. Capital improvements as a broad stroke, yes, but not a roof and sidewalk. And it was just capital improved, capital needs and as a broad stroke.
Yeah, I tell you, I know we're gonna be talking about that subject at another time, but there's no way we can go to the community with broad stroke. They, they need to know specifically, and I know that you know that. And this is an asset of the counties. You know, we started having some real damages. It doesn't mean that we're never getting the roof fixed, but it means now we're spending money in the interim. Repairing the damages that are happening along the way.
Could be like the health department when the.
The dam?
The ice dammed up and went, took out the stairwell, basically. Luckily, they were doing other stuff at the time, but still.
That's scary.
An added expense.
I know I'm bringing a lot of emphasis to this, but I had a commercial building where I did have roof problems and tried to delay the inevitable. Ended up costing me twice as much because I waited too long to do it. Thought I was conserving money. I didn't. Would anybody be opposed if we moved that from twenty to forty thousand as a best guess for this discussion?
I, I'm more concerned about what can we remove first?
Yeah.
And see what we have.
Direction.
Yeah.
Well, I think that you, you and I are feeling differently about it. See, I think preservation of, uh, county-owned property is high priority for me.
And I, I don't think, I don't think, well, I don't wanna speak for Tim, but from my point of view, I, I don't think I'm, I'm disputing that. But what I, I think. What I would like to do is, um, look at things, yes, that we can take off so that we can bump the other thing off, you know, to. Cause in my mind, I'm feeling like, okay, but how important is equalization building remodel? I, I don't, I have no idea. Um, I, it's sad. I've been here a year and I, I, I don't know. I don't know about the equalization building remodel.
That's fair. If that's the approach you wanna take, Tim, do you have some thoughts on?
Well, I mean, right off the get-go, I mean, obviously the technology upgrade for the commissioners. Can easily be pushed out.
Yes.
The, the lawnmower, I mean. We need that, right? This year.
The sheriff would argue yes, and so would the maintenance guys. It's the one that we have, it's got a lot of Band-Aids.
I think that's, I, I, I don't know these, right? Like the lower level access door, can that be pushed out? The flagpole landscaping irrigation, vault storage. I'm, I believe the flagpole landscaping irrigation can be pushed out. Is that a need? No, I think that's more of a want. Again, the equalization building remodel, I understand there's a, a want down there, but is it a need? And we were looking at needs versus wants, and some of the needs are. You know, we're gonna make it so. Like the roof would be a, I consider a need. You know, the card access store, is that a need or is that a want? I mean, I, I think we could narrow it down to that to begin with. You know, the, and some of the wants, yeah, it'd be nice to have, but do we need to do it?
Right, and I don't feel, I don't feel like I know enough about these items to know what's the priority. Um, cause yes, I, I agree that some of these, yes, um, can be pushed aside. I think we all agree the irrigation and the, um, BOC tech. You know, we can push that out, but some of these others I don't, I mean, cause I know the door access is on our agenda today. Um, so I, I, I don't know.
Different doors.
It's not the same, those are the others.
Okay.
So we're working through essentially putting swiper doors on just about every single door. And so every year we've budgeted a little money to do a couple more doors. Um, we're down to a pretty small number of doors. Um, so that's why it's only a couple more years budgeted.
And like vault storage, is that, is that?
That's Tammy. I think that was your request, that district court's request for vault storage. I think it was, I think it was your request for vault storage.
Do the rolling things inside the vault.
Could be, I don't remember.
I forgot we even did that, so that can be pushed.
Tammy says it can be pushed.
This is what I need to know. Thank you. Yes, exactly.
Could, could we talk a minute about the lawnmower since you were trying to make a case for that? So if that lawnmower broke down. The consequences to us is that we might have to hire somebody to come in and do. The, the lawn maintenance because we have to use their equipment, which increases our operating expense.
Yes. Sheriff can speak to the lawnmower.
Real quickly on that subject, so we've, we've had our own lawnmower and the county down here's had their own. Now we have a really good relationship with the two maintenance guys that are willing to work together. Um, and both units, in my opinion, are wore out.
They are.
So rather than buy, you know.
Two.
Residential mower for us and a, you know, by two again, it doesn't make any sense to me personally. Uh, to do that, I think that it would behoove us to look at a. Commercial-grade mower that will last many years and it can do both, can do the entire campus. That's, that's my opinion.
And it, then it only requires us to main, maintenance one unit rather than two.
Correct.
Yes, and there's no reason there can't be a shared unit.
So that potentially would reduce operating costs going forward.
I believe so, yeah, especially in the long term. I mean, initially it's gonna be a hit, but. Long-term, it's gonna be way better. Way, way more manageable and, and, uh, better money ahead.
Eighteen thousand for two or one?
That's for one commercial lawnmower.
We'll quit irrigating the grass and we'll quit growing.
Well, we are gonna.
Save some water.
Yeah.
We are gonna do in the spring, um, where the, the big pine was ripped out, that's gonna be like a natural. Flowers area that the conservation district is gonna help us seed, so that won't have to be mowed. Cause the idea is to make it a nice place for the birds and the bees. Well, because of the. Little nesting areas, supposed to be a little natural area.
Can I ask about jail cameras that's on the list for sixty? Is that something that's a wish? Or are on the, are they on their last legs, or is that something that we can get a year or two out of?
That again's under special millage.
That is under special millage though, that would be separate.
Okay, alright.
Right now, we're focusing on the general fund.
I'm sorry, my eyes start wandering. I start. Stay focused.
So then digitate, digitization of the building?
Building Department and equalization. So I will say that, um, to, to pay somebody, take it and do it. Is much more expensive than to just hire seasonal temp staff. That fifty thousand was to, for someone to take it and do it. We could go another route with seasonal slash temp staff to do that at a much, much cheaper price. So we could probably slash that number by quite a bit. Um, I know before when we had somebody, uh, digitizing our department and another department. Um, you know, it was much, much cheaper than that.
So I'd make a couple of comments about that. First, I think that's something that we could make a decision on later in the year, based on where we're at.
Yes.
Keep in mind, we've had some years where by the time we get to June, we see we got a surplus.
Yeah.
And so we could be making it later, and also in, in my experience, when I digitized a business. Um, I used high school kids.
That's the thing, we could use like college kids or what have you and do it a lot cheaper, like what we did before. Even in the clerk's office, I know that they had a temporary individual who came in and helped work on that a little bit. And it was much, much cheaper than that. This is to send it off, which was a request at the time, but the director has also changed. And so this request could probably fall off the list and we could pursue other avenues at a much cheaper rate.
Or we could revisit it in May or June and see where we're at.
But for the purposes of today, to reach our number.
We could.
We can take it off and add it to the deduction.
So where are we?
We are at, so far my list is, um. The flagpole and landscape irrigation fifty thousand, the Board of Commissioner Technology twenty-two thousand, vaulted storage twenty thousand. And digitization fifty thousand. Hundred and forty-two.
Now you've taken off.
So what's still standing is the card access system. I still have the, um, roof evaluation for twenty thousand. I didn't change it to forty, cause it didn't sound like it. Seventy-five for, um, sidewalks, forty thousand for equalization building remodel, twenty-five for the maintenance barn. But that's already been approved last fiscal, fifteen for a lawnmower, fifteen for lower level access door. Six thousand comm van radio, and then the sixty thousand for body worn cameras, which has already been approved.
Do you have a total for those?
Uh, two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Well, hold on, let me subtract the fifteen, two hundred.
Forty-seven.
Twenty-five, sorry. Two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
So we still have to, we got about sixty, seventy thousand dollars we gotta deal with.
Yes.
You still have the sidewalk, concrete in?
I still have it on there. If I took that off. Then you're, that you'd be good.
We'd be there.
I think that can be taken off. Per illy and pushing it down the road and if we get something really bad, we can block it off.
So Katie, walk us through it one more time about the ones that, uh, would be approved. That, I'm not saying they are gonna be approved, but would fit within the dollar amount available.
Six thousand dollars for the card door access system, um, twenty thousand dollars for this roof. Uh, forty thousand dollars for equalization building remodel. Um, fifteen for the lawnmower, fifteen for lower level access, six thousand comm van radio. Sixty thousand for the body worn cameras. I did leave the maintenance barn remodel off, cause we approved that last fiscal year. It's just carried over because we didn't have time.
The, uh, equalization remodel. What does that entail, or what are we looking to do down there?
Um, so that would be to, um. Do new carpets and rearrange the space down there, so there was adequate space for additional folks with flex space as well. Um, so right now we have three equalization positions, a recycling position, and then we have. Four building, five building department positions. And the idea would be to remodel that and shift everything down. There's a lot of wasted space down there. With cabinets and maps and such that don't need to be there. So the idea would be to shift everybody down. Move MSU extension into there because they're in a closet, make the closet area the storage area. And then create flex space because the building department, they don't have people here every day for certain things, and same with recycling. So rather than giving them dedicated space, there'd be flex space down there for those positions that are here and there various days. To create that flex space, it would also improve security down there. Right now, there's three doors to get into the area. The idea would be to close off, um, some of the doors to the public and make them employee entrances. And create like an actual secure area for the public, for folks to get up and serve them on their feet.
I'm thinking.
And a lot of that can be done internally, so with, uh, Kyle's pretty handy. And so he believes he could do a lot of that himself. Um, forty thousand was to, you know, have somebody come in and assist and that sort of thing. But Kyle thinks that he could do a lot of it himself. It's gonna be the carpet that has to be contracted out. Maybe some of the electrical, depending on where things are running, but everything else Kyle believes he can probably do himself versus paying somebody.
And did that include updating furniture down there as well?
Yeah, so equalization already has new desks, so theirs would be reused. MSU extension provides their own desk for their people. So this would just be upgrading the furniture, really for the building department and flex space.
Can't we? Get funds from the building department to do this, seeing how they're gonna benefit from this and.
Yes, you could pull from the building department to fund like their space stuff, so. Correct. So that number could potentially come down.
The same thing for. For the. So, recycling, can some of the funds be taken out of that?
No.
No, there's no money there. Yeah, no, there's, there's no money in the recycling fund for those sorts of things. Um, all of that money is dedicated to running that program. Um, there really isn't any additional funding in there.
That, I'll talk about that in my report.
Yeah. Yeah, pretty much the entire surcharge is dedicated, more than half of it goes to, um, GFL for the recycling bins. And there's nothing really we can do about that.
Just looking at possibility.
There is building department dollars to pay for that, yes.
Thank you.
And, you know, I appreciate the fact you guys are gonna get tired of hearing me talk about this, but that roof is much higher priority than equalization.
Yes.
I would be taking the money from there and I'd be holding it aside for whatever I gotta do on the roof. And if there's money left over, then we can come back and revisit some of the things we've moved.
So it seems like we're in a better place now, where, where our, our number.
I think you're there, for lack of better words.
Right.
I think that gives us a little extra room too, if we need to with the roof.
It would.
So what we would do is reallocate that forty thousand, is it forty?
Well, so there's twenty for the roof, forty for the remodel, but forty is, is very conservative. So if you wanted, say, do thirty and thirty, um, you could do that.
Well, my, my intuition tells me that I oughta reserve all of that for the potential roof repair.
Never know what we're gonna run into once they open the can.
Holy cow, one, exactly right, Bob. Once they start peeling those layers off, you don't know what you got. There could be stuff rotted up there.
I've never been up there, so I can only imagine.
I'll bet you that roof's been there quite a while. I bet you that's twenty years.
I think at least twenty years. Tammy, do you have any recollection of when they did it or Paula?
Yeah. I was gonna say, I started in oh-one and I don't remember the roof.
So it's been twenty plus years outside of, I think, fixes and patches.
So what I'd recommend is that we move the equalization remodel out and reallocate that number. Um, to potential roof repair and evaluation. And again, we're gonna know fairly quickly how much of that we have to reserve for the roof or not, or not.
I do wanna bring up the lower level access door. We don't know how much that would cost. So that was brought up from a security standpoint recently, given the world we live in and people driving cars into buildings. Um, that one was just recently put on the list. I, fifteen, I don't know if that'll hit the mark or not.
The door or the posts?
I believe, thought, it was like, yeah, the, this concrete ballards, I think they're called, yeah.
Shouldn't be that expensive to put in there.
I know nothing.
Just have to shovel the walkway.
I know nothing about that. I mean, maybe we could do the concrete balls like Target.
No, I'd put in the concrete ballards.
They're cool.
Put them all the way down to where, yeah, you hit them, you're not going anywhere.
But wasn't that just part of the, uh. Plan you were suggesting that stays within a hundred and seventy?
Mm-hmm, but I just wanted to bring it to light, cause we didn't actually talk, that's like the one thing we haven't talked about.
And that is, you said, a safety measure?
Yeah, that was very recently brought up, um, and added to the list for a security measure, correct? The idea is to, to cure the building and sense that there's barriers to stop people from driving through.
Oh.
Doors and those sorts of things.
Okay, so it's not, so someone can open that door remotely, just to keep someone from being able to drive a car up out there?
That's correct.
We didn't talk about the comm van radio either.
Don't know what that is.
Our comm van? It's a mobile, like a.
Dispatch.
Command vehicle that has radios and stuff in it, so we can deploy it wherever we want for like incident command. I think they could even run dispatch out of it if they needed to.
Cory just texted me and said, or messaged me and said that he has budgeted for that to come out of nine-one-one. So we can take that off the general fund line. So we can take that off the general fund line.
Comm van thing?
Mm-hmm.
How's he finding money?
Yeah, right.
We're here. I'm just telling you what the message says. Don't yell at me.
It's high priority for me, but.
Well, it's, it's like you said, right? We're, we're getting to a point here. And then once we find out about the roof, if we need to come back here and bump some more, we can do that, right?
Yeah, because some of the things we're talking about, we talked about this at the agenda meeting, is we can, you know, you keep them on your radar, but you come back and revisit it in April, May and June to see where you're really at.
Because this was the first year in several years that we fell short for what the wish list was.
Right.
We also had the discussion that moving forward, I mean, it's great that the staff compiles a wish list. We have to know what our needs are. We have to have no, you know, project out what our costs are going to be and what the tasks are going to be, but during our budgeting season, you know, Art and I have requested that this be a part of our budgeting. So staff knows. You know, you had this on the wish list and this is what was approved. This is what can move forward right now. Uh, will it have to be relooked at throughout the year? You know, maybe as different needs come up. But right now, as we did it, um, we just kind of overlooked the, the fact that we had a wish list that had a total that we couldn't meet the needs for. And so the staff is wondering, is our project moving forward? Can we go ahead with that? And, um, we need to have a process in line. So staff knows we do the budget. We look at the capital plan. We look what we have left. We approve that and then we move forward. And Tammy, it's actually, you put that on the calendar for next year.
Yeah.
To, so we have a scheduled process to do this. And so right now we're just backpedaling a little bit to plug up some holes.
So Katie, by moving the con van radio to nine-one-one, that frees up six thousand dollars. Let's take a look at what we can do with that additional amount of money. If anything.
So just to clarify, the roof evaluation I'm plugging in forty thousand dollars or keeping at twenty?
Sixty.
Sixty.
You're taking forty from equalization, moving that out in a total of sixty thousand for potential repair and examination. At least that's my thought. I, and again, it's a dart against the wall, guys. I have no idea. They may come back and tell you it's a hundred and fifty thousand. I have no idea.
So that, so by doing that, um, that leaves a hundred and fifty-six thousand in expenditures because we're removing the barn remodel because that was last fiscal year. So technically there would be an additional, uh, fifteen thousand that you could add to the roof evaluation based on what's budgeted, or you could move forward with one of the other smaller projects.
I think we need to isolate the roof and get it taken care of.
And then come back later when we know for the other things.
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, fingers crossed, it's not as big an issue.
Right.
Correct.
We're building up.
Well, if it's twenty-some years, damn well be.
Yeah, it's not bad. It's a patch to patch.
Yeah.
Yeah. It is hard to say what it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's significant consequences to not dealing with that.
So I think we're shored up in the general fund. The other.
Walk through that one more time so we know what items we're talking about.
Uh, car door access, six thousand, roof evaluation, sixty plus. Um, maintenance barn was twenty-five thousand from the prior fiscal year, lawnmower for fifteen thousand, lower level access fifteen thousand, which is a security measure. Um, body worn cameras with sixty thousand, which is already approved. And then that's it.
Is everybody in agreement to that?
And when we say that, when we get the roof assessed, just to be clear, so we're all on the same page, we're having three people come out and look at the roof and give us their.
Blackson's proprietary.
Is it?
Yeah. So if it's Blackson, Blackson's your option unless you're doing a new roof.
I thought there was another company that's as big.
We had a company out of Grand Rapids a couple of years ago, that's some years ago.
But they proposed an entire new roof.
Correct.
Because it used to be this membrane and now there's other, um, roof styles out there that are not really a membrane roof. They're a different style of roof, but the membrane Blackson roof is pretty, is proprietary essentially. So Blackson's your option. That I'm aware. But I can ask, I don't know.
I'd have Kyle do the research on that.
Yeah. So no, to answer your question, there's not going to be three bids probably.
But we'll determine that. We, let's leave that open for the possibility. Do you want to talk about the rest of this?
We can. So other funding sources, you see there that the tax admin foreclosure fund and DTRF fund are funding those. That's fully, um, the, the adopted budget fully funds those two items. So that would still be happening. When we move into the special, uh, millage funds, the jail fund specifically, there is jail millage dollars to fully fund what you see on this plan for the jail for twenty-five, twenty-six. Two of those items are considered for approval when we're done with this. When we move into nine-one-one, those things are funded with the adopted budget. EMS also funded, uh, funded with the adopted budget. When we move into animal control, there are no funds to cover those dollars or to cover those projects. There was no funds adopted. Um, but we are in an interesting situation where we're having some conversations about the future of animal control. So doesn't make sense to do upgrades because we're having those conversations. We have done some, um, maintenance items to, uh, to stay in compliance, Band-Aid type items to stay in compliance with M-DAR for the shelter, but to do major upgrades doesn't seem like an appropriate time until we are for sure not moving forward with, you know, grand trivers or what have you. So we're meeting the checkmarks on the compliance for M-DAR with Band-Aids at this moment. So none of those items were funded. No items under TNT, solid waste or SRO. And twelve thousand dollars was budgeted for a snowmobile trailer. That was adopted as part of the budget.
That trailer made out of gold?
I don't know. Could be, maybe silver.
Oh, was that paid for through a grant?
This, the snowmobile trailer? So there are dollars in their fund balance that could pay for that.
Yeah, twelve thousand probably is on the high side. Was that a two, two-stage, two-place trailer?
I've never, I've never bought a snowmobile trailer, so that would be a great question for the sheriff's office.
Well, yeah, I just.
I assume it would be.
It'd be like twelve thousands on the high side. Unless there's something I don't know.
Uh, the current trailer we have is the tilt. You flip the lid up and then you, you know, it tilts.
Mm-hmm.
And our inexperienced drivers drive the skis through the front. We have to fix it all the time. And so we're trying to get away from that. Um, with a newer improved one where you, you have a ramp in the back, you drive in and then you drive out the front ramp, like.
Oh, more like a.
Normal people have.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and it, and it is a, to answer your question, it is a, it would have, it would be just a two-place. It's not a big extravagant thing.
Seven foot wide, probably twelve foot long kind of thing?
Uh, more like sixteen because our, um, snowmobiles have longer tracks than the old days. So yeah, we're, we've been, that's been on our radar for a few years actually. Um, and it's uh, during COVID, they shut down production. And then when it came back to production, they, now all of a sudden they want half again as much money for them because everything's gone up.
Yeah.
The labor, the material, the, you know.
Thousand did not shut.
So here we are.
Not that I know what kind it is, yeah.
Here we are, you know, now having that, having those hurdles to jump over. So.
But the dollars were budgeted within that fund for that purchased.
Well, that makes more sense now. And maybe it's already being stored outside, but using that style? I mean, that's its own storage unit too.
Yep. The other one is small enough to fit inside with, um, battery tenders on the sleds, but in the, with that, with this one, we probably would just store them inside and give us more, or I'm sorry, outside and give us more room to have things in our whole barn.
Sure. So it creates some efficiencies too.
Yeah.
Katie, anything else on the capital plan you'd like to highlight for us?
Yes. So moving on to the yellow spreadsheet. So technically the way our capital plan is laid out, the vehicles fall under the capital plan. So I'd be interested to hear from the board of commissioners today. Do you want to consider that as still capital plan or do we want to consider that a separate type plan? Um, I'm asking you, right? It's been considered as part of the capital planned in the past. So when I hear capital plan, I know that includes vehicle purchases. Um, other agencies have vehicle replacement plans and capital plans and it's separately dealt with. We here in Benzy have dealt with it as one. But I'd be curious to hear from you on how you want to do that going forward.
But you understand what she's asking?
Sorry if I wasn't clear.
Capital plan for the vehicles, that's at four-twenty-five or four-twenty-six.
No, there's a line within the four oh one fund that plays for the replacement of vehicles. The four-two-five equipment replacement fund is utilized to help, you know, equip the vehicles and do brakes and tires and those sorts of things. But the majority of the dollars come out of the four oh one fund, which has a specific equipment vehicles line that we budget general fund dollars to, to do.
So you're asking us, do we want to have it in the capital, uh, fund budget or do we want it to be separate like you have it right now?
So, no. So in my head, when you say capital plan, the equipment, if vehicles are part of the capital plan, I just keep them on a separate spreadsheet because I have mileage and stuff. So when we sit, when you say, is there anything else on the capital plan? I'm saying now we have to look at the vehicle list. Or do you want that to be a separate, we have an equipment replacement fund and a capital fund, they're two separate plans dealt with very separately with different processes, or are we keeping them as one?
I have an opinion.
Well, I think from a gap perspective, this is a depreciation, if, if you were in government, this would be a depreciable item. So that would be under capital plans.
So looking at the capital plan, you will see on there buildings and grounds, which is the, the Dodge Ram that we have. We have a Ford cutaway van command center, um, sheriff's office vehicles. And then we'd also break out special millage funds again because the jail has their own vehicles. And then EMS obviously has ambulances, animal control has a Chevy Tahoe. There's a vehicle for TNT, two vehicles for SRO, and then the solid waste truck. We have budgeted two hundred and twelve thousand dollars for vehicle replacement with the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. On your agenda today is to approve two, um, patrol vehicles for the Durango pursuit vehicles. That is on the agenda today for later. Um, and then there's two other vehicle requests on the plan as well. There's also an ambulance budgeted, which would come out of the ambulance fund specifically. There's funds for that and it's budgeted that way. Um, and then there's no other vehicles on the docket, uh, to be considered. Solid waste does need a new vehicle, but they can't afford one this year.
Or one next year either.
I, I don't think they can afford one for a long time.
So on the, for the sheriff's department, we have the two requests that we're going to be looking at later today, shortly after this discussion.
Correct.
And then they're also asking for a replacement on the sheriff's vehicle and the Tahoe. And the question for us is, do we want to keep that on this year's plan or do we want to move it?
Correct. Keeping in mind, there are other vehicles that need to be replaced at some point. Specifically the comm van at some point that's going to have to be replaced. We know there's no miles on it, um, but it's one of, it's, it's twenty-six years old.
So the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars is available?
No, two hundred and twelve thousand is available. Two hundred and twenty is just for the sheriff's four vehicles specifically according to the plan. However, it's my understanding that that would, it would be less. The actual would be less because certain equipping items from the old patrol vehicles can be put onto the new patrol vehicles. So there's less dollars going in to equip the new vehicles.
Okay. I know you probably said this and I'm being dense, but where does the money come from for a replacement of sheriff department vehicles?
General fund.
And they show two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in requests. Is that money available?
Two hundred and twelve thousand was budgeted in the general fund for vehicle.
Two hundred and twelve, okay.
They believe they can keep it under two hundred.
And that would be to replace all four vehicles being proposed?
Correct.
Okay. So that's really where the discussion is today. The rest of these have their own sources.
Correct.
And actually there's limited number of requests.
Uh, yeah, the only other thing, um, is the ambulance. And those are two years out requests. They take almost two years to actually get.
But they have their own source of funds.
That is correct.
Okay.
The vehicles they want had to order shortly to get them by next summer.
Certain vehicles have a very long lead time. Um, so the police pursuit Durangos have a very long lead time. So that's why you'll recall, we typically purchase them fall, winter. And then they're not actually putting them on the road until about summer because of the lead time to get them and then equip them.
So I'm going to recommend before we even enter in discussion on this, if the undersheriff, I know you've been working on a policy for vehicles use. Can you share with us where you're at? And the reason why I'm bringing this up, and I've already talked with the sheriff and undersheriff about this, the vehicles that they're taking home, here's our reality. It's that, if we have a hundred thousand mile policy for not all vehicles, but what vehicles, Katie?
Sedans.
Sedans. Potentially of that hundred thousand miles, by taking those vehicles home, we could be burning up thirty to forty thousand miles um, of that hundred thousand just to take it home. And, and you and I, we discussed this at your office. Can we talk about this, please?
Uh, yes. The, the forty thousand, roughly forty thousand mile figure is for all the cars total per year, not on each individual vehicles. So like, you understand that. It's forty thousand miles divided among fifteen vehicles. That it would add an additional miles per year for the take-home vehicles. And that's the actual mileage from door to county line. Uh, so it's additional total forty thousand miles, not per vehicle.
Is that all of these?
Termination, terminology here is important.
Yeah.
So you're talking vehicles leaving the county to go home versus people taking the vehicles home in general. Two different things.
Yes.
And what's the, I just want to check some math here real quick. So they can take, uh, it's, if I remember your policy right, I know you're going to talk about that in a minute. But it was like a twenty-five mile distance outside the county. Is that?
It is. No greater than twenty-five miles from the county line.
Okay, so to and from, that's twice a day. And how many days a year, uh, do that, does a deputy work that he's in this vehicle moving it to and from their home?
Around one eighty. I'll get you a number in a.
Let's just use that.
One eighty-two.
Yeah, I was just gonna.
Okay, so that's about nine thousand additional miles a year on those vehicles. Do you want to talk about what your, uh, your policy is on the vehicles now, just so we can?
Yeah, that's actually the sheriff's policy and he wrote that and developed it.
Need it. The copy.
Yeah, so I shared this with Katie and, uh, Legal, when I, when I drafted it. And basically it's like, uh, like many other things we have, we don't reinvent the wheel. We utilize others around us that are already practicing this. So, um, we, we use their uh, key parts to it, to, um, so this is, this has already been approved by Legal uh, as far as that goes. So, and then, um, it's a policy that I'm adopting at the sheriff's office, um, for many reasons. Um, the main reason is to keep employees and to, uh, make sure that we can respond to help our citizens when needed in a timely fashion. So that's, that's why I developed the policy. Um, we've had take-home cars now. Um, we've had take home cars now. I'm going back to nineteen ninety-nine, I believe is when we started the program. So that's, that's all, that's how we've been progressing through the years. What we're finding uh, in today's culture is that unless you're already established in Benzy County, we hire you from somewheres else and you, you can't afford to move here. Um, you can't afford to, to buy a house in Benzy County to, um, at the, how much money we're paying our deputies. So um, we've had deputies apply from neighboring counties. And key deputies, I might add, that we're very blessed to have. And so we've extended their, uh, the take home call, take home car policy outside the county for that reason.
And you believe this has been an effective recruiting tool for you?
Huge, very big, yes. Frankly, I think that there are folks that work for us right now. There's, there's multi reasons they, they work for us. Part of it's management, part of it's the job that they were hired to do here. But I think that have, not having to uproot their families and come try to find a house in Benzy County that they can't afford to begin with. Uh, we just can't ask our people to do that. And we've, you know, over the years, our, the benefits that we've had have lessened. We don't have a defined benefit anymore through MERS. We don't have uh, certain things uh, that would attract people. In fact, some of the officers we've hired from outside other agencies have taken large pay cuts to come here. I can't explain why, but it, but it's a fact. And um, so with that in mind, I think that we can balance this. We can balance out the, the pros and cons. And um, make it work for everyone without losing people. Not having defined benefits and things of that nature. That means they can go anywhere and work because uh, all sheriffs and all police agencies are struggling and pulling over the same few MCO certified officers in this state. And it's statewide, it's not just here. I don't know what the number is, but if you, if you looked at how many job openings there were, there are across the board uh, for law enforcement. Um, that number, the number of people who are uh, able to fill those spots are probably a, a very small fraction of what they're, is actually needed. So we're all tugging at, you know, playing tug of war with these, these select few MCO certified officers. And so um, having, having the total package, if you will, short of a defined benefit or a better benefit package. But having the total package allows me to recruit people and keep people here uh, where other agencies can't do that. So um, and without that, then that, they mean, that means they can just go work wherever. Um, and, and put their eight in or their twelve in and call it a day. They don't have to worry about the housing or where they're going to live or any of that. They can work, they can work where they already are residing. So that's my uh, take on it.
Sheriff, is it commonplace for um, other agencies to allow the deputies to take their vehicles home?
Yes. Um, there's probably, at least in our region or our area, there's probably less that don't do it than there are that do. My experience. And we talked about, um, another key factor is we talk about the twenty-four hour patrol that we reinstated. We've lost a deputy in the last uh, few weeks here. So the only reason we still have that, that coverage is we're paying overtime to fill those slots to make that happen. So the need is there for our people to, to be able to respond at a moment's notice and um, it's, it's proven that our twenty-four hour coverage and patrol is only, uh, we, we, we fall one person short or one deputy short. Um, and we are not that anymore, you know, it's that, it's that uh, much of a tipping point with us. Uh, so losing, and we've lost that deputy. So losing a deputy is overnight, you can be, you can go from having fully staffed twenty-four hour patrol, everything's great, and then the next day it's not. So we're, we're scrambling after that. So our, our officers have have picked up the slack to make that a reality still, uh, because the community deserves that. And that's what we've strived for is the, the, that round the clock coverage. But it's, you know, we, it's a fine line if we, uh, we burn our people out in doing so before we can get them replaced. And uh, the update on that is, uh, we've had no uh, MCO certified qualified applicants apply that are, that qualify for what we're looking for. Zero, not one. Um, and the same is true with our neighbors who are trying to hire folks as well right now. So how soon are we going to get a person replaced? I can't answer that. But we're, we're, we're looking at creative ways to get people to come here. Um, whether it's from another place or a sponsorship like we've done in the past, we just don't know. We just don't know what that looks like right now. We're, we're diligently working on it.
Right. Appreciate the additional input. I wanted, wanted the group to have as much information as they could as we approached this. Is there additional information that you wanted to offer if the undersheriff had any comments you wanted to make?
I uh, I'd just like to say that I always take care of the, the boots on the ground, if you will, first. So the, the two patrol cars that we're requesting are, uh, whether, whether things change with our, our production or our, uh, the way we do business or not. We're going to have to have those vehicles regardless. So um, I would request that the two vehicles be approved. The detective car and my car, um, or my truck. My truck was approved by you folks two years ago. But COVID was amongst us. So they, as soon as I tried to order, they had shut production down to uh, fleet vehicles. So we, we lost out on a lot of, uh, a lot of vehicles that, over a couple of year period uh, because of that. So I'd just like to remind you of that and hey, I'll take whatever I can get as far as uh, replacement. It gets me to and from, I'm fine with it. If you, if you choose not to do that, but I understand the ball's in your court, but the two patrol vehicles are a very essential to me. So.
And it, what's the lead time on those once you order them?
So I would, I'm going to go as far as to say that it could be a year. So we, we typically, typically order them like now. And uh, our school resource officer, uh, Deputy Mall, who at the time, we replaced her vehicle over the past budget year. She's been driving it for roughly a month now. So it takes about almost a full year. From the time we order them to the time we get the parts or the, the equipment and in, input and all of that stuff. You have anything to add, undersheriff, with that? It's, it's, it's quite a process. Um, I can't imagine having a fleet of a hundred or like some of my friends have. Sixty-five, seventy-five, a hundred vehicles. I I don't know how, how anybody could deal with that, but thank you for, thank you for considering what I've offered.
Well, I'm glad that we have a schedule out there for all of the vehicles because there is that lead time you just described.
It used to be, yes. And then again, I, I'm not trying to prolong this, but um, in years past, we've, we've gone years and years without. Then we've bought six vehicles. That, the problem is they all come, if you don't do it in, in pieces, two at a time, for instance, then it becomes a huge undertaking every five years or every four years or you know, the, the need is there. Um, I think that this is the best program we've had. As far as having them scheduled out, we're, we're taking care of the, what needs to be done and and it just makes the most sense to me. So.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Katie, question for you. We, we spent a lot of time talking about the need of the roof. We have, it, it, because we're not just talking about the two patrol vehicles, we're talking about four vehicles that are being requested. If we were not to approve this year on this plan, the fifty thousand dollars being requested for the sheriffs, could that fifty thousand be reallocated if we had to spend more on the roof?
Yes, it's all within the four oh one fund.
I've been asking all the questions, folks. What do you have?
I'm really interested in the idea as a retention tool, it sounds like for the deputies. Have you talked to them and said, hey, is this, is this a big deal? Is this important that you can drive your car into Calcasas or wherever you need to be or?
We've had that discussion, yes. Um, the other, the other thing that, and I'm going to invite you, uh, Mr. Matthew up to tour our place. I just haven't got there yet because you're, you know, brand new. And I do that with all the commissioners to come in, at least since I've been the sheriff and I'll try to explain how things work because most people don't understand uh, the job that we do and the multitude of uh, specialties that our officers are, are trained in and the multitude of equipment that we have to carry. And it's just, there's just, there's not a, there's not a short answer to, is this, you know, a good thing or a bad thing? Uh, but to answer your question, the, the officers, um, they, of course, it's important to them, but it's, I think it's more important to the people that we serve and, and undersheriff and myself, knowing that uh, when something, a major event happens, we make some phone calls and those people are coming. Uh, and they're ready to, ready to spring into action, if you will, instead of driving here to get a vehicle, go to their locker, get all their gear out, put their stuff on. Though I did that back in the day. That's what we did. That's what we used to do. Talk about a, a crazy thing to happen when you drive past the scene that you have to turn around and go back to because you have nothing to prepare, you're not prepared to stop on your way there, on your way through. It, it, it's, it's insane to think that in twenty twenty-five, we would have to do that because our cit, and our citizens are, are suffering waiting for us to get there. I don't know where else I was going with that. I kind of lost my thought, but um, got off on a tangent.
You're getting old, sheriff.
Again, I am getting old.
Don't say that. I'm not sure where that puts me then. Older, older is right.
Yes, I, I will invite you, sir, up and, and show you the, the reason why and what we got going on up there. Not to mention, uh, I, I, could I please remind you the fact that um, we are in mutual aid agreements with every sheriff's office, police agency, law enforcement agency from Claire. You draw a line across the state from Claire all the way to the bridge. We're in mutual aid agreements with them for diving. Uh, SWAT team, ERTs, which is a SWAT team, um, mutual, we, we all have members on these teams. And we are bound by the, the agreement to respond to those, those incidents wherever they are. Um, so and I would remind you that we're on the lakeshore, so we're not responding that way. We're not going west. When we have, when we have to respond to these emergencies in the middle of the night for SWAT callouts, they're going east and they're going north or south. And that's where, when my folks, uh, most of my folks that live outside of the county, that they, they live on the east side. And the east, east of our county. So and I have, I have more, uh, sher, my sheriff's off, office has more people on those teams per capita than any other agency, if you look at our size. We are, trust me, we are very, very specialized with our people and very highly and well-trained.
You, you partner with the park services as well, I believe, right?
Mm-hmm, yes, exactly. Yes, sir.
Just for a clear, just for a clear understanding, can you share, um, how many of your staff are provided vehicles? And of that number, how many reside outside of Benzy County? And then my second part would be, are all of those who are provided a vehicle and are outside of Benzy County within twenty-five miles of the county?
Okay, let me get, let me break this down for you. Glad I came prepared. I was not knowing that we were, I did not know we were going to talk about this. I currently have eight sar, eight, combination of sergeants and deputies have eight that reside-
Did it vehicles?
That reside out of the county. Okay, you want, first you want overall number.
What's the total number of staff who are provided vehicles?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, county, myself, undersheriff, and down.
And eight reside outside of Benzy County.
Correct.
And are all of them-
They're all-
Twenty-five miles.
Yes, they are. They're all within the twenty-five mile range.
Ryan moved to Lake City.
I'm sorry?
Didn't Ryan Duman move towards Lake City?
No, he's down by Cadillac.
So this is being talked about across the state, weirdly enough. Um, the administrators that listserv just the other day on this, which I found timing appropriate. Um, as far as administrators who have responded, it's about uh, just about every, every single one that has responded provides take home vehicles to some level. Um, there are a handful that only provide it to the sheriff, undersheriff, and lieutenants and sergeants, not road patrol deputies. Um, and it's about fifty fifty of those who allow it outside of the county. Um, the rest of them, you know, the argument is their county is so large that it's not become an issue for them. We're geographically quite small, so obviously it's becoming more of an issue for us sooner than other counties because other counties are pretty big. Um, but it's about uh, fifty fifty as far as leaving the county versus not leaving the county. Uh, and there's a good handful that it's just sheriff, undersheriff, um, lieutenants and sergeant.
Yeah, I do want to remind the group that we don't approve or disapprove of the sheriff's policies. That's up to him. I just wanted everybody to have, be able to con- understand how we put miles on vehicles and how they're used, etc.
Yep, and I, and I would reiterate to, to you folks that I feel I'm doing what's in the best interest for the constituents. There's roughly eighteen thousand people in this county that elected me to represent them. And they all didn't vote, obviously. I wish they would have, but that, that's, there's total people that live in the county that I answer for, quite frankly, I have to answer for them. And I feel that uh, the decisions that I am making with the undersheriff at the top echelon are in no way, shape or form mismanaging or, you know, I don't feel like we're, we're doing things in spite of, or I think that we're doing all of these things to have good qualified people working here, protecting our citizens. And it's all encompassing. There's a lot of moving part. And, but I feel that it's the correct uh, and appropriate way to handle business. I also would like to add real quick that we do a statewide survey, let's say, yep, all these, you know, agencies, everybody's different, including us. But what we have to remember is I'm competing with Grand Travers. These are uh, counties that touch us. Grand Travers, Leland, uh, Wexford, Man, Manistee. I'm forgetting any?
No.
So those are the ones I care about. When, when I, when I make decisions and try to, try to get people, keep people, um, those are the ones I worry about. The rest, good, good on you, but that's okay.
Grand Travers and Manistee don't allow them to leave the county unless they're a lieutenant, sergeant, sheriff or undersheriff. That's official business.
That's not accurate.
Oh, that's what Nate just texted me.
That's not accurate. Their policy is basically- That's not accurate. Their policy is basically our policy.
Yeah, Nate says that they're not.
Okay.
We can get into that debate outside of this meeting.
Yeah, that, that, again, that's fine.
I, I do want to add, by the way, that, um, I have great communication with the sheriff's office. We meet with some regularity. We talk through these things. We talked through this at length in the last couple of weeks. So I do appreciate the fact that I get a chance to sit down with you guys and have a conversation.
Thanks, I appreciate you.
Br, br, bringing, uh, bringing this back full circle, we're approving a capital plan today. With respect to the category that we're just discussing, I'm going to suggest we consider moving, though, the sheriff's request for his vehicle out of this year in case we need that money for the roof. And, because again, that's, that's an unknown number, but now that I've learned that we could use that for roof repair also, um, that would be the higher priority for me. As you've heard me say it nauseam now. So would anybody object to that?
So again, we don't know how much that is, and so we basically have this in our back pocket. So if we move on this now, it, does that really make any difference if we say no vehicle for the sheriff this year? So when we know more about what the roof entails, we can come back and say, okay, no, no vehicle for the sheriff.
Come back to the board.
I look at it in reverse.
It just leaves.
I'm saying let's free the money up now. And if come June, things look different, we can come back and revisit it.
Stay on the list.
But I'm, I'm saying that, as you've heard me say, too much now. The roof is the priority.
I understand.
Art?
Don't say that loud or they'll say not to.
All four vehicles or just the two that are requested? Well, I'm saying that we would approve this capital plan excluding the sheriff's request and then whatever changes we made to the, uh, plan at, under the general fund.
Excluding.
One.
Two vehicles.
Or one. Excluding one.
Yeah, because the request today is for the two pursuit vehicles, and then there's two others being requested.
There's a detective vehicle and a, and the sheriff's vehicle.
So I think what you're trying to say is you want to move forward with the two that have been recommended for approval and move the decision for the other ones down the road.
No, I'm, I'm saying there's three that are being requested in the plan.
Four being requested.
There's three of them that I would move, uh, I would keep in my approval and remove one of the, uh, ones, the one for the sheriff. Because this other vehicle has got a hundred and twenty-three thousand miles on it already.
Both?
Mm-hmm.
They both do.
Yeah, the sheriff's also has one twenty-three.
Understood. And I'm not saying that we couldn't come back and revisit any of the plan, but I'm reserving those monies for the subject we've already discussed. I'm one, one person. I'd like to get others' thoughts.
I like the idea of plusing up the, the roof fund for, I don't know if I can better words. And then because it is movable, though, yeah, we could come out, it could cost fifty thousand for the whole thing, and all of a sudden the surplus, then we can decide to plus up whatever category we want to look at, but that, that's the way to go, I think. Big conservative about it.
The only issue I see by not being able to order them, but we're going to move ahead with.
Well, we'll be acting on that separately.
Okay.
But the proposal in front of you today is for two, so, um, it's just to purchase the two and then it, what you're saying are, is to leave the third one on the plan so the money is allocated for a third vehicle and the sheriff's office can come forward later for the purchase of a third vehicle.
Exactly.
Thank you.
And then we made changes to the capital plan under the general fund, which if you want restated, I'd ask Katie to do that, but we've discussed it at length. I'm open to more discussion on this, but if there isn't any, I'd be open to a motion, too.
Do we need a motion to approve what we changed the capital plan to?
As amended.
You have one written out.
Well, it's the, it's the plan that was included, but I've moved the things around based on your conversation.
Is that good enough, Tammy, or not?
How about motion to approve the capital plan as amended? Is that good enough?
It's your motion?
It is, yeah.
I'll support.
Thank you, Bob. Gary. We'll open it up again to discussion. Hearing none, we'll do roll call, please.
Marky?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Roloff?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Trigg?
Yes.
Do not?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, now, we're going to come back to the two patrol vehicles, right?
Well, if you want to go in order of the packet, it's the vehicles, then the two jail doors, yep.
Yeah, so we've discussed the patrol vehicles at nauseam. Um, would anybody, I'd open to more discussion. I don't want to cut the discussion off, but would anybody be ready to make a motion?
Um, uh, Trigg moves that the border commissioners approves the purchase of two Dodge Police Pursuit Durangos for sheriff's office operational use from, um, Benzy Watson and authorizes funding to outfit each vehicle for police purposes up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars with funds available in the four oh one capital and the four twenty-five equipment replacement funds.
Marky will support.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Matthews?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Roloff?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Trigg?
Yes.
Do not?
Yes.
Marky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Katie, do you want to introduce the next subject?
I will actually allow the undersheriff to introduce the two, um, next items. They were specific to the jail doors, and I'm not as well-versed in these special doors as he is.
Very good.
Uh, I didn't know if it was afternoon or morning. Good morning again.
Still morning.
Uh, these are two, four, two doors within the jail. Uh, they are labeled as E sixteen and E seventeen within the jail. They're in the pod, which is a general housing area. Uh, one of these doors is in immediate need of replacement, uh, and the other one will be shortly. Uh, we have had some issues with one of these doors, uh, which are relatively close in price, uh, recently. Uh, those issues include not shutting properly, uh, which is something we rarely don't like on a jail doors for security purposes. This leads to the exterior of the jail and, uh, uh, a fenced in, uh, outside area that, uh, the inmates are allowed to move in and out of. Uh, both of these are approved within, or they are, they fit within the millage budget for the jail. Um, we have got two bids on each of these doors. Uh, the locks are very proprietary within the jail and the electronics, uh, we have gone over this, I think, uh, in length at,
Buildings and grounds?
Buildings and grounds. Uh, and so I'm asking for the approval on both, uh, door E sixteen and E seventeen, if they are for the lower bid.
And that was part of the capital plan that we just approved?
Yes, it was.
Yep.
There are two separate motions because they were considered separately by the buildings and grounds. Um, so there are two different motions to read unless you want to try to combine them.
Make the motion that the board of commissioners accepts the bid from Northwest Commercial Door for the replacement, the jail pod door E sixteen. Is it the same people for the E seventeen as well?
Yes, it is.
So for door E sixteen and E seventeen, as recommended by the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee, the funds available in the capital fund approves the changes to the capital fund to move another capital expenditure to.
That last part you don't have to do because you amended the agenda and changed the order. So that last part was specific if you had to amend the.
From the capital fund.
Yeah, just end there.
Nine seconds.
Additional comments or questions?
Yeah.
Please.
Were you able to find out if they could build a stainless door?
Uh, my understanding was that we could not, and I just asked around to a couple of people, uh, to meet with the MDLC requirement. Uh, and I don't know why that is, and that's what I wanted to find out before I address that issue.
Seems odd because they're making stainless steel cherry tanks, stuff like that. Prostitution. Just, just thought I'd ask. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? If not, we'll ask a question.
Nye?
Yes.
Roloff?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Trigg?
Yes.
Do not?
Yes.
Marky?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Motion carried.
You want to induce the next one?
No, that was it.
That was it?
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you ended up.
Did you move on both of them?
You ended up moving on both of them, so that was it.
Thank you.
So the next would be reports.
It's five after eleven. Do we want to take a break?
Seven minutes.
Number one committee appointments are actually for.
Okay, it's eleven thirteen.
Why don't we bring it back to order? Um, as we amended the agenda, um, I don't believe there's anything else under new business. Um, I'd ask that we put on the agenda committee appointments. And it has to do with the airport. And Christie, I'm going to ask you to introduce this subject.
So I was, uh, at the airport meeting the other night and, um, you know, we're coming into the winter months and there weren't as many folks. And one thing that was mentioned during the meeting is that where the appointees, City of Frankfurt and Crystal Lake Township, they also elect or point, excuse me, alternatives. And, and that is so that when the, 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 the person that they appoint can't be there, that that person can jump in.
You mean alternates?
Is that what? Did I not say that?
Alternatives.
Thank you. Alternate. Thank you. This is a wrong word. Yes. Listen to my brain, not my mouth, please. So anyway, yes. Um, so they talked about that and they said that the county doesn't do that. And they were saying that, um, the one county appointee goes away in the winter. And they said, you know, they asked if I would, you know, bring that up to you all that um, it would be nice to have an alternative, no, alternate. So that, um, so maybe it isn't my brain or maybe it isn't my mouth. It's my brain.
Well, you wrote alternative in your email.
Did I? See, I got alternative on my brain. Alternate. Thank you. That we would do the same. So they, they asked us if, if we would consider that.
So from, is it our policy about the people that we appoint to committees having a specific attendance?
Yes, I was also going to bring up that, um, it was talked about many months ago that when the appointments were going to be considered for the airport authority, there would be discussion around assigning a commissioner again. Um, because Corey Carlin was the commissioner representative. And when he stepped down from the board, he just became the county's appointee and you lost your county representation on that board outside of a liaison. Um.
Okay. Cause Corey Carlin isn't who I'm talking about.
I know, but I'm just talking about the conversation. So, um, I was going to bring up that that conversation was had and maybe this is the appropriate time. Uh, where a commissioner becomes the alternate and then when appointment is considered, maybe that becomes your position.
I do like the idea of having a commissioner on that board.
Yeah, I do too, but it's already been explained how we ended up where we're at.
Yes.
Agreed.
And the, the two that have been appointed, the two citizens at large that have been appointed, I'm not sure when their term is up.
March of twenty, March of twenty-sixth and December of twenty-seven.
So really the time to act on it would be March. When we're doing a new appointment, we just appoint somebody from this board. But what we're looking for today is to make sure we have full representation from Penzi County when this individual is gone this winter. And I, I was suggesting that, uh, Christie play that role because she goes anyway. And we've already gotten concessions from the airport authority that even in closed sessions, we go into the closed sessions with them. I don't know if they've had any or not.
Not had any.
But my, my immediate solution, um, without any discussion was I was going to suggest we appoint Christie to be an alternate, um, and a voting member when our citizen at large is not there.
I would support that because Christie's up to speed with the operation of the airport. It would be very hard for an individual to just jump in in a replacement capacity and have the background information to make an educated vote on matters.
Was this? Is that a monthly meeting? This individual missing quite a few then.
At least three, I'm guessing. Or, or more.
Well, they, they discussed that this person was, um, uh, out, out for the winter.
That's where I think.
That true for policy?
Yeah, it's against our policy.
Well, is it excused absences or unexcused absences?
I don't think it gets into that.
Yeah, let me pull that policy up.
I think we decided if you're missing a quarter of a time, you know, you're taking the opportunity away from another person who'd like to be active in a, in a regular way.
No, I agree completely with you, but I just want to, I'm unsure exactly how it read.
Records of attend, records of attendance at committee meetings shall be forwarded to the county administrator by the staff for the committee after each meeting. Absences excused by the chair shall be noted. Attendance is one of the several factors considered for additional appointments. Any appointee who misses more than twenty-five percent of the scheduled meetings shall be notified by the county administrator and asked to meet with administration to determine cause. County administration may forward recommendations for removal to the board.
So at this point, they've not missed a quarter of the meetings.
Well, sounds like they have in the past.
And I wasn't notified by them.
I imagine there's not many groups that notify you about attendance at all.
Some do, actually.
Others do.
Yeah. This badge does.
We need to make these groups aware that that's, um.
We made them aware, we had made it them aware originally when we put this policy in place, but a, and a reminder serves its purpose perhaps.
So, I mean, the option is, is that we can just appoint an alternate. Um, and then deal with, uh, the appointment in March. Or we can deal with that individual now and reappoint somebody. It's your pleasure.
I think your best idea was to point Christie to let in. And we'll deal with the rest of it in March and then we'll have hopefully some records as attendance and.
And I wouldn't want this person to be surprised though, if action is taken. I think it's a good opportunity to remind the airport authority that we do have a po, a policy in place and that, um, we've been made aware that perhaps it's being violated.
And potentially they may not even ask to be reappointed. We don't know.
I'll make a motion, appoint.
Okay.
Christie is the alternate.
When the assigned appointee is not present?
Yeah, you're getting better. I'm getting better.
Thanks, Tammy. Can we get support for that?
Yeah, Matthew second.
Right. Would you like to have more discussion? Do we have to do that by roll call?
Oh, we might just as well.
Sure. Let's do it.
Roll offs?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Trigg?
Yes.
Do not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
I?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing it to our attention. We want to have a voice in that, in that meeting. Um, so if there's nothing else regarding committee appointments, we'd move into commissioner reports. And Lynn, we would start with you today.
Uh, not a whole lot to report. I did attend the last, uh, Colfax Township meeting. And, uh, they were happy to see Commissioner out of Colfax. They, they said that a few times. Um, lived in, I guess, in the immediate area. Um, the only thing else I would, I'd mention is that the clerk ran the meeting with two other folks. Guess that made a quorum there, um, because the supervisor was out. That's all I have for that.
Lynn, did, did you get my email or that I forwarded to you about inland township wanting their written report the Monday before their meeting?
Yes, I saw that.
Any questions or comments for Lynn? Yep. Thanks for the report. We know that there'll be many, many more after we get into the first of the year. Tim?
Um, the Homestead Township Board, um, they agreed to sponsor a two percent grant application titled Flat River Park paths to careers for Benzy youth. Um, that's, uh, for improvements to the blueberry foraging field and construction of new walking trail by seeds. Benzy Eco Core Program at the new Flat River Park on the Flat River. The grant request is for $10,000. And the township is starting to work on a park committee to update the park behind the township. Uh, Central Wellness, uh, Network Board, uh, it's brought to our attention that, and I did forward an email out to everybody about the Michigan Association of Counties and the Rehman Group submitted a bid for the mental health regional bid out process. Um, it's a little concerning, um, and I said in the email that some of the context of that is it kind of pushes the counties up. At least that's a, an interpretation in the where to go, where Medicaid goes to get reimbursed in the event that there's an overrun from the, uh, CMH. Right now, if the CMHs are, uh, they go over and it goes to the, goes to the, um, region first. Then it goes to the state, then it goes to the county. So apparently we're in the fourth position, moves us up to the first. Um, and as I understand, it was kind of out of the blue. I don't know who made the decision at the back board. I think the board did. But did they actually talk anybody in the CMHs? And why that would or would not be a good, there's another thing as well and how the Michigan Association of Counties is formed. They're a nonprofit of four oh ones. I can't remember what. Four oh one, five C or something?
Five oh one, C four.
Um, that may exclude them from doing this anyway. Just, there's more, that's may or may not make a difference depending on the lawsuit that they're pending. Talked a bit about Northern Lake CMH again. Um, they rejected the offer presented to them by the NMRE, which was very interesting. Um, that was to forget a couple of years. They weren't able to audit a couple of years of their finances and the offer was just to not ignore them and move forward and they said no. Interesting on that. Um, we discussed that Suzanne Mall is the new Benzy County Behavioral Health Deputy, which was, it's pretty interesting. Um, I, I did talk to her. I happened to see her. Um, I think that's fantastic. I think she'll do well. Um, and Ferris State University gave us their preliminary report on their, uh, critical incident team, um, response. And, uh, pretty interesting read. And then they'll be doing a final report, um, given to Benzy County and how the behavioral health officer is actually working out of buildings and grounds. So obviously we already covered most of the stuff that we cut, discussed there. Networks Northwest Finance Committee, um, we received the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year financial reports, um, um, to, no, Northwest, Networks Northwest. Everything will look fine. Um, we did have a conversation with regards to cash flow. Now with the federal government shutdown and being shut down for so long, they're mostly funded through grants and all those dollars got thrown. So they actually almost had issues where they were, might have struggled paying payroll. Um, we also had, uh, Tom Clipper from Fifth Third Bank give us a presentation on Networks Northwest's, um, investments and opportunities to get cash out of them if needed. That would be to help mitigate a cash flow problem in the future. So they, they have plenty of reserve funds in investments that would be able to handle a cash flow problem in the event that something like this happens again in the future. Just did the, uh, Parks and Recs interviews? And I missed my judiciary and public safety meeting that I talked to you yesterday about art because I actually had a wildland fire had to respond. I got.
Questions or comments? Just as a follow-up and maybe you already knew this, but I did talk to Chip about this issue with Mac. And he told me that Mac did not reach out at any of the CMHs, CMHs to discuss their proposal.
Yeah. And I, I did talk to Chip yesterday afternoon. I spoke and he's still waiting. What's his name? Steve? To give him a call. And if Steve doesn't by, I think this week, I'm going to try to set up a probably meeting with you, you, Chip, Steve, maybe, um, the Jeff from, what's his? Man's Steve Board.
Dons.
Dons. Yeah, Dons. Yeah.
That's an important subject we need to continue to follow because there's implications for the county.
Sure. Um, minimal activity for me in the last couple of weeks. Um, most of you know, I'm, I'm a big part of the disabled American veterans in this region, which incorporates Benzy County. Um, you probably see the Manistee Chapter DAV and the car that they use to give veterans rides to health related appointments. Um, Grand Traverse County also has a couple of cars um, that we manage through the Grand Traverse Bay Area. Um, one of them hit a deer the other day on their way to, on the way back from Saginaw. So that'll be laid up. Um, it's free to any veteran that needs a ride to any, any, any appointments. Um, I hate to say it, but throughout the state, very rarely do we go to Saginaw anymore, but that used to be the, the main run out of Traverse City because there wasn't, there wasn't care locally, uh, until the VA opened it up however many years ago, three, four years ago. Um, which is, which is great. I mean, it's, it's local now and, and they're taking care of what they need to. Um, I attended Kim Noack's retirement party the other day. Um, very well deserved. Thirty-five years committed to Benzy County. Um, her and my wife went to high school together, so it was kind of a nice reunion for them. Um, her husband is, was a good friend of my younger brother. So it was like old home life again. So that's about all I got.
Questions for Bob? I have just a couple of questions and you may not know the answer, but I'm told about 10% of our Benzy County population are vets.
Yes, there's approximately sixteen hundred.
Okay. Do we have a sense of how many of those may be disabled vets?
There is, um, I can't come up with it right now, but there's, it's, it's a pretty good percentage.
Okay.
Um, I'll get them, I'll get, um, an estimate for you.
Uh, it, it, it's just curious. That's all.
No, it's, it's good to know.
And you touched on the facility up in Traverse City, veterans.
Yep.
Um, remind me again, what exactly, what services are they providing?
Um, physical therapy is one in-house, um, blood, x-ray. As far as, uh, private care providers. I don't know how many different doctors they have there. Um, they see the front end and then refer from there.
So if I remember right, Saginaw was a medical care facility, right? That Traverse City didn't replace that though.
No.
Okay. All right. They just, these services you described, they just gave, uh, better access to the people in our region.
Exactly.
Okay. All right. Appreciate it. Rhonda?
Sure. Um, I attended agenda review, um, last week, which led into a DTRF meeting. Uh, the DTRF is our delinquent tax revolving fund. Um, we went over the purpose of that and, and, um, we are a self-funded county. We make our smaller entities whole out of this fund and prior to collecting our taxes for the subsequent year, this fund is what funds um, our county until those taxes are collected. There is a policy that this fund holds uh, one point seven times the amount it costs to fund the county and make these smaller entities whole. Um, we discussed the fact that there was a little bit more of a surplus, but there are eyes on the fact that there is litigation regarding, um, the floor, uh, foreclosure case, which could have, um, impact. Uh, we're, we're going to wait that one out and see where that goes. I attended, um, the Central Wellness Board, which Commissioner Markey has covered very well, um, which led into my MAC Health and Human Services meeting yesterday, which started with an opioid funding, uh, presentation and then led into the legislative update. And I was keenly listening for the PIHP bid out update. Um, and when we got to that part, the, the gentleman who was giving the update said, and on the matter of the PIHP bid out, behavioral health bid out, we are being very vocal about our main concerns. And he was prepared to move on and I actually spoke up and said, didn't you bid on that? And, um, didn't Mac bid on the bid out? And he said that they had and, um, you could see in the room because there were people, you know, in their living rooms and their kitchens on Zoom that this was a topic that commissioners wanted to, to understand. Um, and this led into a conversation about, you know, as a commissioner for a county, why am I not aware of this? That MAC bid on the PIHP bid out? And the response that I received was you'll need to speak with Steve Curry about that. Um, there was a gentleman in attendance who served on the executive committee for MAC. And he spoke up and said that the decision to bid on the PIHP bid out was based on the idea that MAC didn't want the bid going to insurance companies out of state, and this was an effort to protect the counties. Um, and I just said that the information that I'm being provided tells a different story, that it actually puts the counties in a precarious position as far as, um, being the safety net for costs. Um, so that discussion was had. I texted, I reached out to Chip and let him know that conversation had happened. And he just reiterated to me what he had said to Commissioner Markey, that he has not heard from MAC regarding their bid out. So, and other counties chimed into the conversation. I attended the park in. I attended the Park and Rack interviews. Um, there was a recommendation made for two of the candidates who are currently serving and an additional new candidate, which I believe we'll talk about at our next meeting. I attended a Point Betsy meeting to talk about, um, their funding. And it was, you know, we, we had to inform them that we, we just, there is not a bucket to draw from right now to, to support that endeavor. Um, we left that meeting with the marching orders or the forward, um, direction to be checking about more bidders, um, because that seems to be the stopgap between um, their donors wanting to support this project is that they want to see more bidders. Um, and also extending the timeline on the grant that was secured by, um, Senator Bumstead, I believe.
Well, yeah, actually was secured originally by, uh,
Vanderwell?
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Representative Vanderwell.
Well, he was Senator there.
Senator, yeah. And then went to, okay, right. Um, I attended Benzonia Township. The, it was shared that the Conservation District is no longer interested in the building. Um, that they vacated at the top of the hill in Benzonia. They did an overview of their fiscal year attorney's fees, which involved the forerunner case, the Sun Kiss case, two blight cases, and they're, um, right around seventy thousand dollars this year in, in court costs. Um, and they are going to be considering a data mining center ordinance. Um, you're all probably hearing a lot about these things, especially with what happened in Calcasca. Um, they're going to be talking about that soon. I attended Building and Grounds and we've talked about everything that we did there and that's all I have.
Questions for Rhonda? All right, so I'm going to hit a couple of things. On the DTRF fund, um, did we agree that there is going to be, that'll be on our agenda? Um, at a future agenda for discussion?
It's on this afternoon.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
The Point Betsy part of it, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Gotcha. Um, with respect to Mac and Steve Curry, I think I just talked to him on Friday about that. I can't remember, maybe it was, it was just on Friday. So I'll, I'll try to prompt him to, uh, make that call. Cause he was adamant with me. He wanted to reach out, Chip, not for me to give Chip his information, contact him. Um, I did want to say though, that I sit on the Legislative and Governance Committee and that decision was never brought to us at all. So I know they did it at the Executive Board, but they bypassed more than one committee to get to where they're at today.
That's actually troublesome to be honest with you.
From a governance perspective, you betcha. Uh, Point Betsy, can you elaborate a little bit more on that conversation we had with them? Because we didn't give them much hope of the county being able to backstop any of that money.
Um, well, you were at the meeting, but where's you like me to touch on?
Well, we, we went into this meeting with some optimism.
Oh, oh, I see where you're going with that. Yeah, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. We, we had hoped, um, based on some information we had been provided at our last meeting. Um, it was shared that there was, um, revenue being generated from the visitors and, uh, the number that was shared was a hundred and fifty thousand. So there had been conversation about, that puts them in a position to be able to, um, pay on a loan perhaps. Um, and if there were donations that could, you know, cover a portion of the two million dollar gap and then a loan on the other side, you know, what would put, it, it, it was just being tossed around as an option. And in that meeting, um, it had been, um, can't remember his name, uh, Port, Arty?
Grant.
Grant Portia, yeah. Had, had brought numbers of revenue and those did not match what this board was provided at the previous meeting and they're not in a position to pay back loans at this point in time. Um, so that was an option that we kind of walked into the meeting feeling very positive about and that was quickly, um, yeah, that, that is not going to be an option. So is that what you were hoping I would touch on?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and what I want to add to that though, if I could, is, you know, several months ago, we had a discussion about, did the county want to continue to own the lighthouse? The reality of it is, is we can't afford, I don't think, continuing to own the lighthouse. So I think that's going to be a discussion somewhere down the road again. And I hate to keep revisiting these things, but if you're looking at a seven to nine million dollar expense and they can't get that grant extended, I don't know where we'd ever come up with the money for that.
Get it back to the federal government?
Well, Katie, you can discuss a little bit about how that works.
Yeah, so the patent in place essentially says that if there's this, um, idea that we're not going to own it or try to get rid of it, we have to offer it back to the Bureau of Land Management first and essentially wait for their, their next step. They may say they want it back or they may say no, and then we have to amend the patent to be able to then gift it or sell it elsewhere. I have sent an email to the BLM, to our regional office, and I have not received any sort of response back to open that conversation.
So I just, did I interrupt you Tim? I just wanted the full board to be aware that that discussion is now back on the table, not because that's where we want to be, but based on our finances, that's where we've got to be, is, uh, have that discussion again. Either way, we wait till the thing falls into the water. But, um, the level of urgency is minimal right now. But the, I, we did learn at this meeting also that, um, there's no guarantee that when they're piling, putting the pilings down, that that may destroy the lighthouse further, which will increase the cost of maintaining that.
Yep.
It's, it got, it was a great conversation. I hope you guys thought so, uh, but very enlightening. Things we weren't aware of before. And last question for you. So is Benzonia considering writing an ordinance to allow data centers or to exclude them?
They didn't say that, to address the centers.
Okay.
So I'm not sure what position they'll be taking on that, but it is a, it is a hot topic lately.
Requirements around the data centers and what, the, the.
They draw a natural restart.
With the data centers. The data centers can use up a lot of, require a lot of water to keep you cool.
And energy.
And energy, yep. They can put a, a strain on the power grid.
Right. Yeah, that's, uh, that's really been quite a discussion nationally.
Yeah, and they say, well, we'll ring, bring, bring all these jobs into your area. Necessarily, they have data centers that are completely lights out, or they, there's no one physically except for security on that facility.
And just to add to that, uh, presentation I said in recently on that, they talked about all these jobs. They say these things are maintained like with twenty-five people. There, there isn't a lot of, there's not two hundred people in there.
So where do you see as the best location for these, Tim, as our resident IT commissioner?
Well, I mean, they're, they're gonna, so that, some of the talk is, is these, um, small nuclear reactors to power them. Yeah, that's one of the things. So do you want nuclear waste in your facility a, area as well? And if best spot, you have to have cooling and our infrastructure around here for power, put it bluntly, sucked. I mean, uh, the, the amount, if you go down and look at the lines as you're driving down the road, every so often you take a little bulge in the line, it's like about that long and it's like different color, it's silver, that's where it's repaired. You know, put together. And if you look from pole to pole, frequently you'll find four or five of those between pole.
I didn't know what that's, that was for, but.
Yeah, I mean, it just, so. We need a major upgrade to our electrical infrastructure to begin with. Now, Cherryland's a little better than Consumers, I think, um, with regards to that. But I don't think we have the electrical infrastructure to handle it. So I mean, it's, it's a good to have something to help guide for like zoning with regards to these data centers. I don't know. Good place for them?
I'd be curious to see what their thought process is. Anything else? I didn't mean to belabor that, but I wanted to expand on some of that stuff. Kristy?
Hmm, um, so I was accounts payable on the thirteenth. Um, on the fourteenth, we had our Materials Management Planning Committee and, um, I, I don't know, I've been kind of making comments today. So one thing that was brought out when we were talking about household hazardous waste and Benzie County has two of these, um, a, a, a year. And, um, one of the Fishback, uh, representatives was like, well, you know, this is one thing that we can do, we can have more of these and, um, and basically Benzie County cannot, um, we, um, our budget is, um, is, is not such that we can sustain, um, more spending in this regard. And, um, yeah, um, probably in three years, we won't have enough money to support current levels of what we do. So, um, so then the committee was like, okay, well, let's, let's look at other funding, you know, that we can do, right? Because what we do right now is we're under, I forget it's PA something, but anyway, we tax, uh, I believe it's twenty-five dollars a, a, a household. And then we use that money for the recycle bins, the, um, household hazardous waste for, you know, the, the things that we do. Um, and so, and, and, and maybe even Katie could speak better to this than I can, but, um, anyway, um, that's what we, um, we do. Now Grand Traverse holds five of these, Lelandau holds, um, four household hazardous waste. Now, what sets Lelandau apart from us is Lelandau also, not only do they tax under the same, but then they voted to increase how much they can tax above that twenty-five dollars. So they can tax up to fifty, but currently I believe they are taxing at thirty-seven. And so that's how they are able to do a little bit more than we are. And so again, we're gonna, we're gonna talk more about that and, um, different funding things. And so I think we talked too that Trevor, and I think I've mentioned this before, Traverse City, um, they do it at different, um, they.
They have a tipping fee.
A tipping fee for the landfill. So basically when you go to the landfill and you pay that fee, that fee goes back to Traverse City and then they can use that for their recycling efforts. So, um, different, different mechanisms there and certain things. And, you know, that's something that our, I don't know, we can discuss, um, at, at some other time maybe, but this is going to become a problem. And so this is probably something that we should probably be talking about ourselves, um, in time. Um, also the, uh, surveys went out to our local units of government. Um, uh, Lydia sent, uh, that out. Um, I noticed that Katie also sent something out to our local units as well. I sent something just to my district. So, um, y- yeah, if you're out there listening, um, please, um, please reach out if you have questions. Again, Lydia is the person, but if you want somebody, you know, that you know a face of, Katie can help too. I can help, but Lydia is the best. Um, anyway, um, so we talked about that. Um, and again, we're going to talk about funding mechanisms next time. I also went to the M twenty-two Pure Michigan Byway Committee. Um, again, this is just kind of getting off the ground. Um, some administrative things were discussed. Um, uh, uh, putting bylaws together and having, uh, some mask, uh, what is it called specifically? Um, a performance evaluation. So we had to have this performance evaluation of, of how the committee is doing. And again, we're just starting out, so there wasn't a lot to it. Um, we also, um, supported, uh, the Arcadia Wayfinding Project. Um, so there's still a little bit more to do and they talked about how they want the next meeting to be in person. And so we've got Manistee, Benzie, Grand, and I think even Lila, I, no, not Grand Traverse, Lelandau. So we have this corridor and they said, whoa, well, you know what, um, Benzie's right in the middle. I'm like, yes. So, uh, if we do something, um, locally, um, it might be, uh, here in Benzie, it might even be right here. So, uh, you know, community at large, I think this is a great place, um, a, a great thing to look at. Um, this is a, a beautiful and a by, I had to look up byway too. Byway is, is a road less traveled. I'm thinking, I live right off of M twenty-two, it is not less traveled, but, but it, it doesn't feel that way, but it's, it supposedly is. So anyway, um, yeah, that's, that was interesting. Um, City Frankfurt, um, they had, um, two newly elected, uh, members on the council, uh, Peter Penfold and Jenna Smelter Pritchard, uh, um, Joanne Hualda, Whole Worda was reelected. Um, and so, um, yeah, that's, that's the, um, tho- those are the new folks. And, um, one thing that, um, it, of course, we were mentioned, um, um, Peter Penfold, um, asked about iPads for council members and instead of having printed packets, doing something like what Benzie County does, the Board of Commissioners having the packets electronic. And so they're going to explore some of that because they do, they, they have binders and everybody's flipping through their binders and, and, and doing all that thing and that, that's fine. Um, but they're going to talk about, um, possibly doing something else. Um, um, they had, um, just above forty percent voter turnout for the election. And, um, I believe you mentioned, well, you can talk about Lake Township and their good, their good, um, turnout as well.
You can speak to it.
Yeah, so, um, Lake Township had a really big, um, turnout as well. Um, so it looks like, um, I, I don't know, people, people really wanted to vote this go around. Um, so that was, that was good. And then something, um, both, um, uh, City of Frankfurt and Crystal Lake Township received a sunrise award. Um, as a vigilant steward from the Michigan Fair Elections Institute, Institute, it just means that they didn't have any duplicates on their roles. They, they did, um, they were, did everything, um, uh, above, everybody knows everything above word, but you know what I mean? Perfectly, perfectly, perfectly. How's that? Perfectly. Sorry. Um, let's see, um. Yeah, I'll, I'll move that along. Okay, so we talked about the Point Betsy Lighthouse discussion. Um, the Health Department, I, I will leave that to, um, Commissioner Sauer to report on. Um, I did not actually make it to the Crystal Lake Township meeting. Um, but I know that, um, they wanted, they wanted it to be a fast meeting and I know that the airport was discussed there. Um, and then the next day I went to the Airport Authority, they asked for an alternative, which we, an.
Alternate.
Alternate, my God, what's wrong with me? Alternate, like, cause I'm gonna.
Don't, don't worry about it.
We know what you mean.
You, yes, um, they're not going to have a, a December meeting. Um, the, uh, the, and if you've been by the airport, you've seen that, uh, a lot of the trees, it, 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 it's just, we're bare ground now. So, um, the Elliot property, um, has been, uh, removed. So you, you come, if you go up or down the hill, um, between Stefanski and, um, that property there, you can see a swath and you can see all the way down now. And then, um, the pines next door, um, they also, um, started, uh, removing some of their trees. So there's just this little swath of trees, um, right by the road. The other day I was driving by and there was little turkeys moving, you know, to, and I'm like, oh, don't go that way. There's nothing over there either. But anyway, it's kind of funny. Um, their hangar electrical meter consolidation was completed, um, and I'm not sure, but they said their fiber internet installation was completed. They're still working on their crew car replacement. Um, they are also working on the FCC AA strategic plan and they're trying to work on that piece by piece in each meeting. Uh, so we just kind of went over the pre-planning, um, just kind of talked about who, um, key stakeholders were and, and that sort of thing. And I imagine next month we'll have more pieces in that strategic plan, um, that they'll be discussing. Um, they also are looking for roofing quotes. They're looking at that too. Um, and then they're also looking to sublet their community hangar for a month and so the brush hog will be outside. Anyway, that was, was more or less the airport. And, and I also went to the Parks and Racket interviews, um, just like Commissioner and I. Okay, and that's where I am. It was a busy week for me.
Yeah, good report. Questions for Kristy? Uh, just to touch on a couple of things. Katie, will we send, will we formally send notice to the Airport Authority that Kristy's been? When it?
I can do that.
Okay. And I don't know about the rest of you, but I sat in that meeting and I know you and Gary did, REM twenty-two. And I'm still not sure what the heck those guys' mission is. Uh, it's, it's, I don't want to get into it if nobody else is curious, but they're making a big splash. Uh, it's, it's, I don't want to get into it if nobody else is curious, but they're making a big splash. There's uncommunication and through all of that, I'm still not sure what the heck they're doing.
Uh, yep, I, I, I got, I got a feel of that too. Um, I, I, I almost felt too, sitting in the meeting. And you know, we had all this stuff that we were kind of discussing and I felt some of it was almost skimmed over like the, um. The uh, the annual performance evaluation. I, I don't think we really discussed that. Um, and then the, the, the resolution draft, I mean, we actually voted on that, I felt like. And then the bylaws, I didn't feel like we really got anywhere with that either. So I, I don't know.
Okay, then I'm not alone.
No, you aren't.
I know two or three months ago, they contacted me. Wanted a list of people that should be considered to be share stakeholders. And I provided the list, not sure what I was doing. And that's how the two of you ended up on it. You're welcome. Um, and then to this day.
Blame somebody else.
Well, you can blame me. So anyway, someday maybe we'll get clarification. Gary?
Cause I actually represent Blaine, cause we're on twenty two.
Right.
Um, yeah. Let's see here. Thanks to. Katie over here, we got Chris and I can't pronounce his last name from.
Packbarth.
D T E come in and discuss possibilities is where we're going and we kind of. Brought up tribe. I guess I gotta get up to the mic. Anyway, um. The part I really liked is D T E is looking to expand. And if there's, he's kind of looking at. I get this right, correct me, um. Like spots around the lakes where there's a high density and possibility. You know, people would pay for it and. If we can just get it out there and get it around, I think it's going to be beneficial to the whole community. So. He has reached out to me. I gave him the supervisor's name and Blaine. And uh. I think he's coming to one of our meetings. Cause they'd have to have access like they do with power lines. I don't know what they call that exactly, but uh. I'm excited about it because that would be huge. They'll never get to my house, but uh, unless I cut a deal. But just the fact that they're willing to talk about it. And keep fixing it up and they're real excited about the tribe. I think Chris is, Chris is gonna help us move this forward. Uh, the byway thing, I'm still confused, uh. But because of the funding with M dot, they have, they created a new website on that. So, uh. Not sure exactly, just like everybody else. Um, Benzie Bus. We elected, uh. Two members to fill vacancies for the vice chair. That was Jack O'Malley and the treasurer was Brian Fleetwood. So. The board is pretty much fully staffed. I think things are working well. The new members are. Things are mo- working a lot smoother and uh, hopefully we can even get a little better and down the road. So. And I did ask them at that time, I said. Have you guys ever considered using natural gas for the vehicles versus? Uh, the propane and, and uh. Chad says that they'd have to have a special thing to fill it up. Well. Wouldn't the cost savings get you there eventually over propane? I would think. I'm not giving up yet. I'm gonna keep hammering on them a little bit and asking them, because I think it's a good idea. Um. The Health Department, uh, normal business. There wasn't a whole lot going on. Dan was still in the U P, so he came in virtually. We are gonna do a uh, valuation for Dan. It's probably gonna be after the first of the year, because that was part of his contract. So. That'll be coming up in January. I don't think we have anything this month, right?
No, we don't.
We're off.
Yes, and they, oh, and did you mention too that they want us to stay on? For the next year as well?
They would like consistency with the board, but that depends on when we do our committee appointments. Um. Usually it's about a two-year shot. Is usually the chair. Is from Lelandau County and it's usually for the two-year, but now that we went for your terms. Still think the two-year is a good idea.
My sense is it's not gonna be competitive. You don't, you don't need to.
I keep looking around and.
You don't need to oversell them. Anybody getting excited here? Nah.
Excuse me. This was the exciting part of the week. Uh, Village of Alberta had their normal mi- uh. Normal meeting at noon. On the twentieth, and then we had a special meeting for the development of the, the property that evening. So we had two meetings that day. Artemis is the name of the developer that they've hired. And they had like a. Two-hour meeting that night, about an hour of it was asking questions from the community. There was a lot of people there. Uh. Senator Bumstead was there, uh, John Roth didn't make it. Um. The State Land Bank was there and all those folks were there. So it was well attended. They want to do a. Charette?
Charette.
I couldn't spell it, so I didn't write it in here. Uh. Anyway, um, they want to do that and they're looking at. Three to nine months to get public opinion on what, how they want to develop this. I think that's a heck of an undertaking. They're hoping that the community feels that they're involved in this and uh, that part I like. But a lot of times you get too many cooks in the kitchen. Uh, we'll see how it goes. But uh. To me, it, it's headed in the right direction. And I think it's gonna be valuable for the community. They just gotta get it done right. I don't. Know a whole lot about this. They only had two developers apply. But this is the one they agreed on, so. Good. Other than that. Been deer hunting, so I've been trying to avoid this kind of stuff.
Anything else, Gary?
Oh, that's it.
Any questions or comments on Gary's report? So I provided you my report in advance. There's not really much that I can add to it. Um, because we've discussed at length, most of it. What I do want to bring to your attention is you should have received. Uh, same email I did regarding this county leadership training program. Um, it's open to commissioners. It's through Naco. Um. You know, not all of us would or benefit through going through it, but some of you may. We do have a budget for training and development, right, Katie? I think it's done virtually and it's, I think a thousand dollars a person, but I don't remember. But I, I did some research into it and based on my history and my experience, um. You may want to take a look at it. It's, could be, leadership development is really critical. And it's. It is a taught skill. It's not just something you learn along the way. So Katie, you and I had not discussed this, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. Do you guys remember getting this email? It was probably in with a group and you had to drill down on it, uh, but it's through Naco and. Katie, I'll get with you and we can get some information out to him. All right? Any questions for me beyond that?
The Naco thing was embedded in there. Cause I usually delete it.
You, you know, I, I think I have to go back, Gary, but I think it was one of those things where it was a Mac. No, it wasn't. It came, it came by itself, but there was a series of subjects and you had to click on. And this leadership program caught my interest, so I read more into it. And I'm just thinking, I'm not saying that you're deficient in your skills. I'm saying this might be a good way to build on those skills. Was that diplomatic?
Hey, you did well.
Naco also offers a training specifically for um, administrators and leaders here within the county. And we have three folks in it right now. We had two folks who took it last year. And for the next round, we'll probably have another at least two folks taking it. And the response from staff has been that it's been a really great program. Uh, for the staff side of it, it's about twelve weeks and it's an online only as well. Um, and I've had great feedback that it's been a really good training for leadership on the non-elected side of things.
I'm glad we're taking it. I figured we were taking advantage of some of that.
Yeah.
Katie, let me turn it over to you, please.
Yes, so just a few things from me today. I wanted to talk about hours of operation. Just a reminder, starting Monday, this building won't unlock until eight thirty for the public. Um, so just a reminder to throw that out there. I also wanted to talk about the animal shelter. We have worked with the staff up there to expand the hours of operation for the animal shelter. So starting in December, let me pull up the hours and don't read them wrong. Starting in December, we're going to be open to the public on Saturdays and Sundays, starting at ten AM until three PM. Um, so we'll be able to have folks come in the shelter on the weekends. Um, we, we were able to finagle scheduling with the part-time staff to make that happen. So we're really excited about that, to have uh, weekend hours again in the shelter. Also in the shelter for November, we took in ten dogs and fourteen kittens. And we still have two dogs and two cats up for adoption if anyone is interested. Uh, the treasurer has hired a chief deputy treasurer. Her name is Patty Lasur. She currently works for Grand Travis County Administration. She lives in Lake Anne. We're really excited to have her on board, starting on Tuesday. Um, she's, I remember her from my time down there. She started about the time I did and. She was always a really breath of fresh air, sweet person. So we're excited to steal her and bring her out here to Benzie County. Um, Carissa is almost done with Budget at a Glance. We want to send that to print. Last year, there was an addition of adding a group shot of the commission on there. So uh, two things, if you could dress up for the ninth and we'll take a group photo. Um, for the website as well as the budget at a glance. If you don't want it on the budget of, at a glance, we won't add it on there. But last year, that seemed like a really nice addition to have the group shot on there. But either way, if you could dress nicely on the December ninth meeting, so we could get a group shot for the website at a minimum. The P A sixty nine is what Christie was referring to for the surcharge. So under P A sixty nine, we can assess it up to twenty five dollar surcharge to every parcel. And we can do that at the board level. To assess anymore up to the cap of fifty dollars per parcel, that has to go to a vote of the people. So the voters have to say, yes, we want to be charged up to fifty dollars per parcel for recycling services. Uh, Dave and I have talked about that a little bit. We're really, you know, it's hard to go to the taxpayers for money. Um, but that would be the only option to increase it from the twenty five dollar surcharge per parcel. We are obviously locked into a sense of. We have a lot of public land and water, so once we get to a max spot of parcels, we're not really taking in any extra money. Um, into the future unless we start breaking up farms and other large pieces of land. Uh, because it is twenty five dollars per parcel is how that surcharge works. But if the conversation were to uh, extend, um, we would have to consider also going to the voters for that. And it's up to fifty dollars is the maximum for the P A sixty nine for that specifically. Uh, that's really all I had. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Is there questions for, you know, Wendy?
Kristy brought up what Grand Travers is doing. Is that an option for us?
The tipping?
The tipping?
I don't know a lot about the tipping. Um, I don't think we're eligible because we don't have any. Uh, facilities owned by the county of which where you can take your refuse and recycling.
Right.
So they have landfills and they have a res- um. Well, let, there's a landfill in Lelandau. And then in Grand Travers, they have a, a yard of some sort over there on Keystone where you can take your stuff. And you pay to drop your stuff off. We don't have any sort of setup here. I don't, I what's, that's owned by Cory?
It's owned by Cory, but I mean, is that the type of thing you're talking about?
So the city and the county own the other ones, the, own the drop-off spots. So they're, they're owned by the county and the city.
They collect that fee when you.
Correct.
Takes though.
Yes. But we don't own anything. Benzie County doesn't own anything to do that. But I don't know a lot about tipping because we don't do it. So I've only looked more into this P A sixty nine, the surcharge. That's what we do here in Benzie.
Anything else?
Has the Animal Control Director position been filled?
Nope, there was one interview this week. The rest of the interviews are out, going to be after the holiday. So we're hoping to fill that as soon as possible.
Katie, the new deputy treasurer, what's her name again?
Patty Lasur. I think that's how you say it. Leisure, leisure, L E A S U R E. I think it's leisure.
And I had shared with everybody, including yourself. That bill that's being proposed about the, I'm gonna call it a rental tax.
Yes.
It's a bed tax of sorts.
Yep.
I know that it may not get any legs, but let's, through your office, let's be following that.
Okay.
Cause that could, I'd, I'd be curious to know if it would apply to communities our size.
So based on what I read through yesterday, I didn't get through all the nineteen pages. But in the section where it talks about the qualifying entities, it fully strikes the size of the municipality and just says a county. Township and so forth. Um, so based on that reading, I would say we would be, because all it's doing is striking the size. Everything else applies. Which we would meet those standards. Right now, we don't apply because right now it only applies to counties over six hundred thousand population. And the way that was draft was written that you sent, it strikes the six hundred thousand population only, which would mean that we would apply. I'm a little fuzzy on how it works though, because it appears you have to. Put in some sort of facilitator of sorts to collect the dollars. And I don't know if that could pseudo be the treasurer as the tax collector. So those parts will have to be. Researched a bit more, but based on the strikeout, I think we would be eligible.
It's being sponsored by John Roth, right?
Yes.
Yes, he's one of the sponsors.
Mm-hmm.
And he, i- in his own words, he's saying, you know, maybe in its present form, it may not pass. The reason why I wanted you guys to see it is we've had this discussion here a number of times. Because they specifically say the money would be used for increased public safety. Because of the burden and also infrastructure issues. Um, very important if we could get that passed.
Yeah.
We have to be able to fund these activities, but it should be passed on to the people that are, you know, causing us to spend that money. All right, good. Anything else, Katie?
Uh, the only other thing I'll add, um, tying onto what Gary talked about with D T E. We have formally made the connection between D T E and the tribe, so they're having conversations about an expansion project there. The tribe is excited to be part of a, a possible larger expansion. Uh, so those conversations are happening. And as you remember from our joint meeting. There seemed to be a strong um, urge from the tribe to want to do a project within their part of the county. Um, and based on the emails I'm receiving now, is they're excited to be part of a bigger project in Benzie County if they're able, so.
So just so you know, I'm being introduced to a private provider of natural gas. That could be, help us encourage DT to move this along.
Great.
Their, their business model is that they provide natural gas to a home um, unit that. Um, provides electricity into the house. They, they believe they can do it cheaper.
Interesting.
More information to come, but after I have that discussion. And Gary, I believe that was your goal for this year is to get something started, so.
It took me a while.
Yeah, well, you didn't, you know, you have forty-five days left.
Yeah.
All right, now you have uh, the presentation of correspondence that was provided to you in advance. We'll move to our last public comment. Seeing none? We'd uh, take a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed?